Good evening, everybody. We apologize for the delay. Welcome to our regular board meeting. Adila, can you please do the rule call?
Yes. Today is Monday, May 19th, 2025. The time is 6:18 PM. This is the regular Board of Education meeting for Evanston Skokie School District 65. Roll call.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Pinkard.
Here.
Updike.
Here.
Wymer.
Here.
Wilkins.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. We take time to acknowledge that the land we meet on is the traditional homelands of the Council of Three Fires, the Parawarami, Ojibwe, and Odawa. This land also served as an important meeting place for Miami, Ho-Chunk, the Menominee, Inoka, SAC, Fox, Peoria, Arapaho, Cheyenne, and other tribal nations. This land has long been a center for indigenous people to gather, trade, and maintain kinship ties. Located at the intersection of several great waterways, the region has become the site of travel and prosperity. We acknowledge Evanston and John Evans are tied to the massacre of the Arapaho and Cheyenne for railroads and westward expansion upon which John Evans developed his wealth and founded Evanston. This land was violently taken under settler colonialism through genocide and open warfare, and the region that is now Illinois and Chicagoland is still home to thousands of native people who are actively struggling for sovereignty, self-determination, and justice. The genocidal acts of settler colonialism extended to peoples of Africa and their enslaved descendants. Despite Illinois eventually prohibiting slavery, slavery was an accepted practice before and after statehood. The vestiges of slavery remain throughout the United States and directly affect the descendants of enslaved peoples. Rich and heterogeneous communities will help define the African diaspora. The genocidal patterns of violence against peoples of African descent and indigenous people have been replicated to exclude and harm people from many intersecting marginalized identities in the United States: religious, minoritized, disabled, and LGBTQ identified peoples, Black and Indigenous people of color, and people of color writ large. These patterns demonstrate that the pursuit to end state-sanctioned violence against BIPOC is a daily struggle for liberation from continued social, political, and economic anti-Black racism and oppression. Today, we acknowledge that we are living, breathing, loving, grieving, laughing, and sharing space on unceded territory. May we learn to honor the historical and contemporary presence and power of the people in the belief that we must be caretakers of the lands and waters for the livelihood of future generations. We encourage everyone to continue to expand their knowledge and reduce their harm through awareness of local mutual aid models for survival and through engagement with online and local resources such as the Chicago American Indian Community Collaborative and the Shorefront Legacy Center. The next item up is the approval of the meeting agenda.
I approve that the board approve today's meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Salem.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pinkard. Updike.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is board and superintendent comments.
Awesome. I'll start with turning it over to Melissa.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're going to start off by celebrating our high-five recipients for March and April. So that's our celebrating excellence in District 65 staff recognition program. As a reminder, and for our new board members, we have a new format for our presentation. So we actually go, a team of folks go out during the school day to surprise our educators and support staff within their classrooms and workspaces with the award. So it's a really nice surprise and really turns up the joy quite a bit. We would like to thank our sponsor, Byline Bank. They make this program possible at no cost to the district. By sponsoring our program, our recipients receive a gift card, a frame certificate, and a high-five water bottle, all sponsored by Byline Bank. March's winners are Stephanie Abudaya, music teacher at Dawes and Kingsley Elementary Schools; Lourdes Barajas, a paraprofessional at Kingsley Elementary; April's winners are Jacob Rubin, classroom teacher at Walker Elementary; and Berta Deutsch, health clerk at Haven Middle School. And I think Adila is gonna turn up the J factor with our video recap.
I applaud Stephanie for volunteering and PTA, which is consistently, for years, the first one to lay the hand to connect and to express gratitude. But the gratitude is mine. I am so lucky to all three of my kids come to have you as part of the expedition.
Can we get a round of applause?
Thank you, Melissa. So I want to take this opportunity to extend my heartfelt thanks to our incredible fine arts educators for the energy, creativity, and care they have poured into this season of celebration. From the vibrant Yay Fest to inspiring concerts and powerful drama productions, you've created unforgettable moments during one of the busiest times of the school year. Your commitment and passion continue to bring our schools to life and remind us of the joy and impact of the arts, so I want to just say thank you. Also, for the remainder of my time, I would like to invite our Haven Middle School leadership team up to just briefly share more about the state of Haven and really to address some concerns that recently have been raised regarding the school staffing model. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Ladding and Mr. Smith to come up.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to speak this evening. To get started, my name is Chris Ladding, and I am the principal at Haven Middle School. I'm joined by assistant principal, Thomas Smith. So what we're gonna do is just kind of go through, oh, sorry. What we're gonna do is go through some of the presentation that we presented. We present this presentation about twice a school year. This presentation that we're gonna be going over tonight was one that we presented to our school community last week, and we call it the State of Haven Showcase. What we're gonna do right now is just kind of go through some of our data that we presented, and I'm guessing you guys can. This slide right here just shows an overall, sort of like a satellite view of who our students are in terms of our demographics. You can see that we have data separated out by grade level, the number of students. We also have listed the number of students in each grade level with IEPs, as well as students who are emergent bilinguals or English language learners. One of the other pieces of data that we felt like was really important was to show sort of like a history of enrollment data dating back to school year 17 to 18. If you just take a couple minutes just to kind of absorb what's all on this chart, you'll be able to see, you know, our enrollment over the last several years, as well as the number of IEPs that we've had in those consecutive school years, as well as the 504s. Again, we have our language learners listed as well, as well as our low-income students, the number of out-of-school suspensions, and the number of administrators. You can see on the top. We'll give you guys just a couple seconds to absorb that, and then we'll move on over to the next slide, which is focused on the J factor. The J factor is one of our systems that we have been kind of following around through the district over the last couple of years, and I'll have Mr. Smith kind of talk about the J factor.
Good evening, Thomas Smith. He is assistant principal at Haven. Thanks for spending some time with us this evening. Did someone say J factor? Because y'all are gonna get a lot of it right now. On the left-hand side, you see Mr. Hernandez, who's our head custodian at Haven. We have this top-secret mission where we get to celebrate the custodians every year. We do something fun with them. We distract them. All the kids line up in the hallway, and we get to celebrate them. We have some of our students enrolled in Spanish, taking a trip down to Pilsen. We had our first board game night to get kids off of screens and engaging with one another. We're able to celebrate students of the month. Here we have an eighth-grade student being recognized by the eighth-grade school counselor and eighth-grade social worker. On the left-hand side, you see our SEL team introducing themselves during our curriculum night. In the middle, you see some faculty joy. This is our winner of the fantasy football draft picks, which is highly competitive at Haven Middle School. The teacher on the left was awarding the teacher on the right, and he said, "Oh, man, that's the best photo you could get of me," and he's blinking. So right-hand side, we have one of our avid events in the morning for folks to hear a little bit more about our avid program, which you'll hear from some student celebrities this evening. Over on the left-hand side, we had a delicious and, again, competitive opportunity with our staff, with our annual chili cook-off. Some of them were very, very picante. In the middle, we do have our really famous back-to-school bash. We have a DJ. We get an ice cream truck. And then, Mr. Ladding, I don't know what you were doing over here, but I think you were reminding some of the boys that it's two-hand touch and not tackle at recess. We have a student in general in music having a blast playing the drums. We're able to celebrate musical excellence. And on the right-hand side, we have our well-attended curriculum night. Before I introduce Talia Salon, I want to say that J factor is a source of pride at Haven, and it's not something that happens accidentally. It's done by design. And so during the presentation, I'm really hopeful that you can see that there's a method to the madness. Without further ado, I want to celebrate one of our student ambassadors to come on up and tell us a little bit about our student ambassador program.
So I'm Talia Salat, and I'm here to talk to you guys a bit about the Haven Ambassadors Program. So through my experience with the Haven Ambassadors Program, I have learned many things. First, I've learned leadership through giving tours, and I've also learned teamwork through event planning, such as agreeing on movies for Haven Movie Night or the Spirit Week events. We help out with a lot of events throughout the year. We do tours for the incoming sixth graders and also students who transfer to Haven mid year. And our biggest event is the Haven Movie Night, where we mostly run the event along with the help of Mr. Smith. We also plan out Spirit Week, and the recent, we had an ABC Countdown. And when there's like posters announcing this in the daily announcements, those are also made by us. And we have meetings like once or twice a month where we just plan out different events for Haven. And like overall, I think the ambassadors is a great opportunity because you learn so many good traits, and it's super fun.
Okay. Thank you so much, Talia, for your leadership. We want to introduce our school work plan that has been a two-year culmination and project. We have one goal that's designed for restorative practices, a goal in average daily attendance for our students, and then improving MAP data. We're going to go a little bit out of order. I'm going to hit you with the second goal first, which is improving attendance. We have a general attendance goal and then targeting Black or African-American student demographic. You can see some key strategies and key action steps to enhance our bifold goal. One of the things that you can see over time is that we've made some substantial growth. Haven, at this point last year, we've improved our average daily attendance rate for all students, 0.56%. Black or African-American students, 1.12%. And then, at this point last year, the district average was increased by 0.27%. So our rate of improvement in attendance is more than double the district average, and we're really making significant strides in supporting our target demographic group. Attendance data is more than just numbers. There's a story behind it. And so in partnership with our really fantastic SEL team, we designed an attendance check-in to get more of the story about what's going behind the numbers. And we were able to work together with students to get a little bit more data about what's going on. We know that in the wake of the pandemic, coming back to school for some students has been really challenging, and so we want to support them. One such thing we learned was there was a student that was like, "I'm really having a hard time getting to school." And we said, "Why is that?" Well, I kind of live far away. So we were able to leverage a community partnership in Mike's bikes and hook the kid up with a bicycle to get them to school. We also are transparent about our average daily attendance data. We share it regularly with students. This is a slide that students regularly see in our monthly town halls. I'm going to hand the clicker back to Mr. Ladding to tell us about restorative practices.
All right. Thank you very much. So our next goal that we're going to talk about is restorative practices, and that's couched underneath the umbrella of a safe and civil school. This SMART goal that we created is based on, we'll talk about some of our data from 2223 school year. This is sort of the beginning of those things. We decided that we really wanted to ensure that our students had a place to come to learn and a place to learn it in an area that was safe. So again, this is kind of the impetus of our goal number one. The metrics that we decided to use for this specific goal was the Panorama Survey. And the reason that we chose it was because this was initially one of the lower, favorably responded to sections on the Panorama Survey when the students, when we ended up with absorbing all of our student data. So we kind of looked at that and a couple of other things in figuring out what is it that we can do in terms of our action steps and strategies. We came up with some plans, and happy to report that this goal was, our SMARTY goal wasn't supposed to be reached until June of this year, but we actually met the goal in the fall of 2024. So we kind of, I guess, did better than what we thought we were going to do. So this is always, you know, kind of, I think, a great thing to celebrate. We're going to continue with this goal, which I think we're going to tweak it a little bit, and in terms of the metric, we're going to use the Panorama Survey again. Our last goal for our school work plan is centered around our MAP growth, and we specifically wanted students, we wanted to be able to move students out of the bottom quartile on both of those assessments. The slide here that I'm going to show you right now, we were able to move a number of students out of the bottom quartile. We still had some left in there that we had hoped to get out. This is a goal that we're still moving forward and trying to perfect. So we'll be tweaking this goal a little bit, adding some new strategies, interventions, and action steps for the next cycle. Along the way, over the last three or four years, we've developed some powerful partnerships with some community members. Metamedia, DubleA Scholars, all of those that you see up there have been in the building and interacted with students and families at some point over the last several years. We're looking to continue on strengthening these relationships, but then also, if there are any other relationships that we should connect with other local organizations or partnerships, we're definitely welcome to do those things as well. So families that are going to be receiving the next few Haven newsletters will see me recommending that if there's folks that we need to meet, to please reach out. I would like to now highlight another of our really cool programs that I feel like brings Haven students joy. Personally, it brings me joy to hear students talk about their experience with this program because this is our third year of Avid at Haven, and our first class, our first cohort of Avid students are going to be graduating this year. So we're really excited to see, and I'm really excited to be able to show you kind of what the Avid experience is like. So I'm going to invite a couple of our Avid scholars to the podium. I'm going to have Chaz and Aiden come up really quickly.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chaz.
And my name is Aiden. We are seventh-grade Avid students.
Avid is an academic program for grades six through eight. The purpose of this elective is to prepare students for college eligibility and career success.
In the Avid class, we learn and develop academic vocabulary in both writing and speaking. We develop critical thinking skills, and we use Avid organization skills to keep track of our coursework and organize our thinking and learning.
We also develop focus note-taking skills while utilizing various WICR strategies that support all content areas. We attended college field trips and career day events. We also learned from guest speakers, like when we had the Northwestern Women Basketball Team come to visit us. We also foster leadership skills in Haven events like this one.
These are some highlights from our Avid classes this school year.
We did interviews with ETA students. The teachers and Avid parents, they did a Bruin brilliance. I know because my mom has a coffee cup. Avid students preparing for family night in the conference room. Eighth-grade students, she took a trip to Loyola and their food hall. And Ms. Shaver got awarded for the Most Valuable Teacher shout-out at the Northwestern Girls' Women's Basketball Game.
Next up, we have Kalia and Hannah with a speech.
Hi, my name is Hannah Angola, and I'm an eighth grader who's been in Avid all three years. When I first came to Avid, I was nervous and wasn't expecting anything good would come out of it. With my doubts, I decided to give Avid a chance. Throughout all three of my years, Avid never fails to teach me something new. When getting an opportunity like Avid, take it. In my first year of Avid, Ms. Shaver was very welcoming and supportive towards everything, such as setting goals, writing TRFs, and possible career choices. Ms. Shaver made Avid feel like a home. Later that year, I would look forward to third period every day. Every time I walk into class, still to this day, she says hi with the biggest smile on her face. Avid is truly a great class, and it shaped me in ways I could have never imagined. Avid has pointed me in the right direction, whether it's getting ready for high school, staying organized in college. My first year, we did a college project, and still to this day, I've been researching colleges for fun, admiring campuses, and finding a perfect career. Avid is truly one of my favorite classes and has helped me improve the most. Like I said, when you get the chance to be in Avid, take it.
Hi, my name's Khalid DeSavio. I'm also an eighth grader here at Haven Middle School and also in the Avid program. Coming into middle school, I thought this was going to be super hard and tough, but I was really wrong. I thought Avid was just for nothing until I actually got there. Coming into sixth grade, I was super shy and not really outgoing. That all changed once I met Ms. Shaver. She brought me out of my shell with nothing but encouragement and believing in my goals and what I wanted to accomplish. Ms. Shaver opened up a world full of possibilities and opportunities for me and everyone else in her classes. Ms. Shaver helped me so much that I even joined the school play in my eighth-grade year and actually auditioned for a main role and got it. I was super surprised, but a lot of it came from Ms. Shaver, Mr. Shar, and Ms. Carl. In this program, they teach us focus note-taking and different ways to have a growth mindset and help us shape our futures into what we want them to look like. Avid is like my second family just at school. It's more than a family. It's your community that you feel safe in, and you can speak your mind when you want. It can help you make new friends coming into middle school. Avid isn't always about learning. We go on awesome field trips and have fun in the classroom and just build a community and have fun overall.
Thank you to Hannah and Khalia and Aiden and Chaz's family for getting them here tonight, and for them for participating.
Hello again. Hannah and Khalia, I don't know when you got taller than me, but I've been with them since they were in sixth grade. You need any learning. Our kids come to learn, and adults do too. And so that's what I'm going to tell you about in this next series of slides. We have embedded learning for adults in our building called Workshop Wednesday. It can be differentiated to meet various needs, but it really falls into three main buckets. The first is a WICR workshop. WICR stands for, it's an acronym for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. It is something that's fostered in Avid, but we're trying to foster it interdisciplinary as well. We also focus on MTSS to support students with an array of academic and social-emotional learning needs, and then we have a good old PLC. We also have something called Focus Friday, which I'm going to tell you about in a second. These are just some artifacts and products that our educator team at Haven has been able to create through that Workshop Wednesday model. We also have Focus Friday, which is, this year has really been dedicated to our goal behind restorative practices, which is most focused on students. We, a few years ago, we had about ten educators, including myself and Mr. Ladding, and Jacob Delay, attend the training. Jacob Delay has gone through a training where he can do kind of a train-the-trainer, and so he's able to lead and facilitate some really great learning and restorative practices work at Haven. Pass it over to Mr. Ladding.
Thank you. So now we're going to go and just review some of our school-wide trends. You can see on the left side, this is school year 2122. This was kind of, I would say, the first year that I really experienced Haven for all of its wonderfulness, right after COVID. If we all just decide to take a trip down memory lane, we can remember the sort of some of the events that took place during that school year and the following school year. At the end of 2122, Mr. Smith and I really sat down and thought, there's some things that we really need to systematize here so that we can have things running a little bit more smoothly. We need to see students in classrooms more often than we see them out of the classroom. And so you can see here in the column that says 2223, these are all of the, I would say, the major or the heavy hitter strategies and action steps that we put into place throughout that school, starting at that school year. You can see here that we have some things that are highlighted that are specific to our scheduling of students, and we just are happy to share that we've had quite a bit of success in terms of student academic growth. I would, we could say, starting from 2223, that we'll see in a few other slides. If you are interested in having some research to read through, there's tons here for you to absorb. We won't go through all of them, but you definitely have that at your disposal. What I'd like to show now is, if everybody can see, it looks a little small, but we have four consecutive years of scheduling. You can see on the top left, we have school year 2223. Move over to the right, 2324, 2425 on the bottom left, and then on the bottom right, 2526, which is our projected, which is based on our projected enrollment for this coming year. You can see that there's a history of the way that we have adjusted or adapted to the needs of our students in terms of staffing. I'll just kind of let you guys absorb that for just a second, and then we'll move forward. Also, in the year 2323, Haven was, for the first time in a while, no longer designated as an underperforming school. On October of 2023, we were designated by the Illinois State Board of Education as a commendable school, something that we are all very, very happy about. The next thing that I want to talk about is this wonderful test that we all take in the state of Illinois, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. There are five levels of proficiency that students are ranked in based on their performance on this assessment. You can see that the five are listed there with kind of an explanation of what each one is. And for this, the next few slides, what we're going to be focusing on is I want to draw everyone's attention to the percentages in the Level Four and Level Five, and specifically those are the areas where students have met expectations or have exceeded them. And so this next slide right here, again, we start back from as early as school year 28, or I'm sorry, 2018, 2019. And if you look through sort of vertically on columns one through five, from the left to the right, we will notice that there is some change in the percentage of students' performance levels. Just to sort of like not have all of us absorbing all this data right now, what I can tell you is that we have successfully moved students from the lower levels of proficiency to higher levels of proficiency. You can see that, for example, in the year 2223 and 2324 specifically, we've had a significant shift in the number of students that have met or exceeded in the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and this is only for math. We're going to show you now some information on the same assessment, but only it's going to be focused in reading. You can see the same trend. More students are moving from areas of lower proficiency into higher proficiency, into the areas of meets or exceeds, again, something that we're all very proud of. The last couple of slides for the IAR assessment are things that I'm going to just highlight. This was, actually, this image and this sort of concept was shared earlier this past school year, Donna Cross, I believe, presented on this. And this is just sort of an opportunity for us to kind of see, you know, what is our change looking like, starting with IAR assessment data from school year 2223, ending in the school year 2425, which was this past year, what we can see, or this past, this past fall. What you can see is that over time, Haven has improved that number of students that are in the Level Four and Level Five by 12.8 percentage points, which is a pretty significant gain, which is a pretty significant gain in student performance. The next slide shows the same assessment, we're just looking at it in ELA. You can see that at the beginning of sort of like the three-year period, we had about 30% of our students, just over 30% of our students, performing in the meets and exceeds area. However, by the time the last year's session of the IAR assessment rolled around, we had 61% of our students either meeting or exceeding. And that number is significant. I think that there are many schools in the state of Illinois who would be happy to have student proficiencies at this level. So again, this is all, this is all a result of lots of hard work, strategic planning, and collaboration. Thank you for your time. This was the last slide. It went faster than I thought it was going to, but we're here at the very end.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Thank you, Thomas. And thank you, give a special thank you to our Haven students. And to their parents, thank you for bringing them. And so we're just grateful to see the great success that the Haven School Team is really doing, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, wow, change is hard, really understanding the growth and the work that they're doing to really change outcomes for students. And so we want to continue to be partners in the work with that. And so kudos to the Haven team holistically for the hard work that they do every day.
Is this something we're going to discuss on the agenda, or is that it?
You can, if you want to ask.
Yeah, if you have any questions for our here, again, please.
I have one question. So like, first of all, it's just, it's great to see all of the progress that you've been making, both on the academic side and on the culture side. That's very encouraging to see, and it's always great to hear from students directly as well. I guess my first question is just, looking at these results, can you talk a little bit about how you think you were able to make this progress? And I know you had the one page on there with all of the different things that, you know, you've done over the last few years in order to make progress, but I'd love to just hear a little bit more like how you think things are sort of coming together and how, like, what is the secret? What are the things that you think have been particularly effective in getting us to where you are now?
I think one of the, I think it's not, I don't think one answer. I think it was more of a feeling. It was very palpable that there were some changes that needed to happen, or systems that needed to be put into place to kind of move the feel of the building, so that way the learning could take place. Again, I think one of the very first things that we started out doing, one of the first things that I remember having a conversation was, was that we needed to make sure that students, staff, and families were clear about our expectations for students' roles and responsibilities. And there was an app, there was, that was absent. There was no clear-cut descriptive expectations for, how students were to be a part of the learning community, and once we were able to establish that, it all kind of fell into place. I think that was probably the first thing that I think was most important, but in terms of, there's a number of things I think that will probably contribute to the overall success over the last three years.
Thank you.
So, thank you, and I want to say, those are phenomenal gains to the administration, to the teachers, to the families. It takes everyone working together to, to make them happen once and to continue to happen. Can, so, one, and I don't know if you can, if you can address this, but those gains are a combination of both your cohort model, and I assume both your, the model and ways in which teachers have been teaching now. So can you speak, can you speak to how, looking at those gains and being able to look at them between the cohort model? Is there a difference in terms of, is part of your change based on you're seeing your cohort model outperform your traditional schooling model?
I think to get a really good answer, that's going to take some deeper dive. We would have to look at students across sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, compare that to same-age peers over that three-year period. That might be one that we have to circle back on, but I think that it's a, it's a concerted effort from a lot of things that we sort of actionized that were absent.
Wasn't that the reason for the change?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't that the, like, wasn't Nicole's question, wasn't that the reason for the staffing model change?
The reason for the staffing model change is aligned with students' enrollment. So in terms of having sections that are closing, this was a way for us to make sure that students had an opportunity to be in classrooms and absorb information and have exposure to the content and curriculum in ways that they wouldn't have been able to before. So again, when I say it was a concerted effort, there's a million different things that, that were on the list of things that we wanted to make improvements of, that you could see in that column right there. That was one of them. That was one of the first ones that we highlighted.
So, thank you. I think the, the progress really speaks to the hard work of the teachers and administrators and students. I, I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to the conversation and the engagement that you had with your teaching staff around the changes that were made in the cohort model and how those were received by the teachers?
Can you, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, sure. Can you speak a little bit to the staffing changes that were made and the conversations and the engagement that you had with your teachers prior to those decisions being made?
Sure. We followed appropriate communication and collaboration channels related to teacher assignments for the following school year. Our top priority has always been very clear, which is ensuring that students are set up for success and that teachers are feeling supported in their role. That being said, in the state of Haven showcase that you just saw, declining student enrollment has led to reduction in available class sections, which directly impacts how teacher assignments are determined to support those student needs. These shifts are obviously not made lightly. We take them seriously, and they reflect really evolving realities of, again, our enrollment trends and the need to align staffing with available resources while keeping student learning at the center.
Just a follow-up question to that. For teachers who are already sort of using like a part of the cohort model, have you received any feedback either on like how it's going as well as just what sort of support they feel like made them successful or would make them successful as a part of that model? I don't know if you can talk to it too. You should probably involve as well.
Under our leadership, again, we've consistently tried to center students and their experience in our decision-making as the primary stakeholder. As with many aspects in school life, there are trade-offs when it comes to course assignments. Some educators really thrive when they're deeply immersed in a single content area. Others are really energized by the opportunity to teach, for example, math across multiple levels, adapting instruction to meet varied student needs. Still, others really prefer teaching multiple levels, I'm sorry, others, multiple grade levels, adapting instruction. Still, others prefer teaching multiple subjects to the same group of students, which, again, values kind of deeper relationships, so there's gives and takes. At Haven, we do actively engage all key stakeholder groups, students, parents, caregivers, and staff by providing structured opportunities. We give a mid, beginning-of-year, middle-of-year, and end-of-year survey. We take that feedback really seriously, and we consistently use it as a foundation for reflection, growth, and continuous improvement across our school community. So it does come with kind of mixed reviews. I was a former math and science teacher myself. I have had the experience of looping up with students, and I will tell you that you really have to Maslow before you can bloom. You have to connect with kids and provide deep, authentic relationships. I love unpacking a good science and math standard, maybe more than anybody in this room, but you really have to connect with kids first. So give and take, I would say.
I think one of the concerns that I, that I have is that teaching science is a, I think, a difficult thing in that there's a lot of prep involved, especially when you're doing experimentation and things like that. And I'm concerned that, you know, you get the, that the teachers that are teaching those subjects, if they have a lot of experience teaching those subjects, it goes faster for them and they have a greater facility, and then the kids get that excitement. And so have you, how did you consider kind of the teachers, I guess, you know, core competencies and strengths in teaching when you made these assignments decisions?
So in terms of the assignments, I think that it's important to realize that the, the teachers are assigned to teach in one content area, the ones that are on a two-person team, that they are endorsed in. For example, we have teachers who are teaching language arts are endorsed in language arts. The teachers that are endorsed in math are teaching math, and they may have an endorsement in another content area, or they may not have another endorsement in another content area. Again, just like Mr. Smith had talked about earlier, these are the two ways in which we're able to make sure that students have, what I want to make sure is I'm dispelling any myths that teachers are walking into a classroom where they don't, they're not, they don't know anything. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, because otherwise, I feel like it would be really hard for us to talk about all the celebrations and gains that we've made if, you know, things weren't aligned in ways that met students' needs.
Okay, I have, I have two questions. I'm going to, first of all, say thank you, but I noticed although enrollment is dropping, the number of students that receive, our IEPs are five, the students that receive individual education services is increasing. So how is that factored into the change in teacher cohorts and assignments?
So the answer to that question is students with individualized education plans still get the same accommodations and supports that is outlined in their IEPs that isn't changing. So there's.
Okay. Also, Haven has demonstrated significant progress with the current model, and with any adjustments in the model, what do you expect in terms of outcomes moving forward?
I would say anything that we do, our goal is to make sure that we're improving opportunities for students to demonstrate improved or high proficiencies of learning. So if, I would say, just like if we find that there's a system that we want to tweak to sort of help meet that need a little bit better, then we're able to go to the drawing board and collaborate and see what it is that we need to do to make systems better.
If you make a significant change now, though, will you, will you check more often to make sure that what, the changes that you've made are positive?
I think, yes, and I think one of the ways that we're able to do that is with our, we do three surveys with students, staff, and faculty three times a year, which allows us to have sort of a really good touch point in terms of what systems might need to be tweaked, or what systems might need to be thrown out, or what systems might need to be enhanced.
And what will you do to help prepare teachers for their change in teaching assignments?
So there are a lot of different opportunities. We have as early as, we're already starting conversations right now with our JEH curriculum and instruction teammates. We're looking at creating opportunities for folks to attend some voluntary summer work, and then also some, at the beginning of the year, we have new teacher training where teachers are going to be invited to attend those. But then also, remember, we have an, during the school day, embedded PD time for teachers. So we have times carved out on Wednesdays and on Fridays to really lift in some of the systems that we're going to be providing some PD over, but then also, that's also an opportunity for us to reflect and look at student work samples and all those other things. So we have stuff, times during the day that are built in for those kind of things as well.
Thank you.
If, if I could add, in terms of your first question in regards to meeting the needs of our students with IEPs, we are increasing allocations for Haven in terms of teachers, our LBS1 teachers. So that's going to increase by three teachers there, so it will make sure that we address the needs of our students with IEPs in addition to other allocation increases in personnel, including psychologists there too.
Thank you all for being with us tonight and sharing this presentation. It was already asked about engagement with teachers. More specifically, can I ask about your engagement with DECK over this?
Can you repeat that?
Can I ask, it was asked already about engagement with teachers and communication. Can I ask more specifically about your communication with DECK about this?
So I think, just like Mr. Smith had said, all of our communication has been aligned to our expectations, so everybody that's a DECK rep that has had conversations with us has been made aware of their assignment change.
I have a question about students, because I feel like, you know, this is a model I'm getting more familiar with, and I know, you know, part of it is just because of the number of students and trying to serve it, but, and this is a question for you, but administration, feel free to chime in as well. What are the sort of pros and cons for this sort of model versus a traditional model for students? Like, has that, I'm sure it's been done at other places, and it seems like even at Haven for a few years, we've had it in certain areas as well, so I'd love to understand that more.
You want to start with y'all pros and cons?
I think in terms, could you maybe narrow it down just a little bit?
Yeah, just the pros and cons on students of the cohort model versus having like a separate teacher for every subject.
Sort of fewer, fewer educators per grade versus depth of expertise per subject area.
So one of the areas that our next school improvement goal is going to be based around, is going to be student-teacher relationships. And in a goal like that, where we're really trying to focus on, how can we provide students with opportunities to build deep relationships with their teachers? This model kind of helps lens itself to that. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that, just like we're hoping through, like, through that scenario, we were hoping that students build deep models. We already modeled that sort of system in the district, in our, in our school for students, because, for example, we have our SEL teammates that loop with students from sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. That's just done primarily, just so that students and those staff members can build deep relationships along with their families. It'd be a great way to have some historical knowledge on how students perform compared to their sixth-grade year as we're walking out the door to do our transition meetings to high school. So again, really systematic in terms of like how we can really build relationships. And again, we're, we're doing some things that have never, to my knowledge, have never really been done with, to the scale at Haven, and so, you know, if we find that there's some things that we're going to tweak and roll things back if they aren't working, we're definitely going to do that. We're not going, we're going to stay student-centered in all decisions that we make, so.
And just one last, just a clear question. What is the number of teachers who are, whose schedule is being changed?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but we can get that for you.
Did you all have anything like on the district side? Because I know you've probably done more research on this than.
Yeah, I think a model like this is exactly what he articulated in, in the sense of fewer adults touching kids, right, to really build relationships. We know that coming off COVID, the needs, social-emotional needs of students were much greater, and I think in a model like this, this allows for better relationship building. I think, in full transparency, you know, one of the things that, that's on the table for us is the structure that we have in our middle school model. Our middle school schedule really needs to be revamped so it really gets to a student-centered model. I know that when we talk about collaboration with DECK, there's a subcommittee that is spending time trying to be very thoughtful about how to really reimagine that, to really put, put kids at the center that would be much better for them, and potentially allow, you know, the model that we're talking about in terms of one teacher teaching one content area at a time. I think this allows for some collaboration, better collaboration among teachers, cross-collaboration. In all honesty, we're shifting to a humanities and esteem focus, so this particular model supports that shift and could be leveraged as a model as we expand out of how we could do this in some other places, if that makes any sense. So I think there are different pros and cons to the model, and again, with the reduction of enrollment across the district, we're going to have to be really thoughtful about and creative with enrollment to continue to meet the needs of students. But again, you know, making sure, one of the major things is making sure you have the appropriate license and certification to be able to teach children, and so if we have those things, being open and having the mindset to be a little bit flexible to allow for, for us to be able to do that. And so it's a lot of considerations that have to be taken into consideration.
Got it, that makes sense.
You know, one of the things I think about, and you pointed to one of your data points around attendance, right? We need to have students in our classrooms. And part of, again, every, every school district is struggling with, you know, chronic absenteeism and just having, you know, again, the threshold, having it be in 18 days that they miss out, and particularly students of color, particularly students from lower income, particularly students who have IEPs. So to see that, right, that improvement is a testament to just, it's that Maslow, right, which we're talking about for folks who are educators, Maslow talks about ensuring that students' basic needs are met before they can even start learning, right? So that right there is pointing towards some good practices, which, again, Haven historically, and again, I've been here close to nine years, that just hasn't been the case. I mean, students and families of color have not felt that welcome, and to see that, it is just really something that we should be striving for, getting the students in the, in the classrooms. And then I really appreciate, again, y'all building on that now, because now the next smarty, it was what I'm hearing, is that now you're going to look at teacher-student relationships. And that's critical. I mean, that's critical, because, and again, I know teachers, teachers have, are asked to do so much, to be social workers, to teach content, to deal with parents, like, again, there's so much that teachers are asked to do, and administrators as well. But to, again, at the core, we really should be focusing on, what is it that students and families need, right? And how can we create a culture and a climate within each and every one of our schools where students and their families, right? Because again, students are not just these small, you know, widgets that we have in our classrooms, but they're, they're couched by family and community. How can we create a community that, that feels welcoming to all students that step into all of our schools? And I think that's something that we've struggled with, and then we've made some, some, according to the data, we've made some strides. Again, back when I started, we weren't even measuring social-emotional learning. So the Panorama Survey, that's something that, that again, is now feeding us insight that we, across the system, educators, parents, board members, administrators, really need to be digging into and paying attention to, to, in order to drive better outcomes and improved outcomes for all students. So again, I just appreciate the work that you all are doing. I know when I was a teacher, again, I was told, again, I'll tell you. I know when I was a teacher, again, I was told, again, I'll tell you, one of the first schools I started at over in CPS, Padavaski School, I was hired as a bilingual teacher. And I was transitional bilingual, I had to, I had a caseload of students. And that, that school was rough. It was in North Lawndale, no law, it was one of the ones that was closed back in the day by Rahm Emanuel. But it was, again, primarily African American, we had Latinos in there and that was it, right? And we're all working class. And there was a point where, because the climate was just so, there was so much trauma, there were just so many things going on. Again, I had to get pulled from my caseload in order to meet the needs of the students that needed me at the time. So the administrator had to pull me. And again, I, I got into teaching to, again, my, my specialty is to be bilingual, a bilingual educator. So I had to, and it, it got me upset. I wasn't happy with it. But again, my job as an educator is to be where the need is at, right? Be there for the students. It ain't about me. So I was put, again, I taught from, from, from pre-K onto eighth grade. I mean, because teachers wouldn't show up. So I was put in there. And I got to know every, you know, the class, every student, I got to know their parents. There were some really rough days, but I stuck it out. And because that, that is what we as educators are tasked with, is we're going to be where the need, where needed. And again, given these times where public education is in the crosshairs, right? And we're really questioning, you know, where, where things are going to go. And figuring out how to deliver a high quality educational experience for, for the students that remain, I, I think it's, it's really critical that we really focus on relationships and start from there. So again, that's just my take on this. So thank you for the work that you all, all our educators who are doing at Haven and across our schools and the administrators. And again, it's just some incredible work, but a lot of work to do still.
Can I make one suggestion? Because the, because the students at Haven are going to have a different core structure, if you will, than the other middle schools, and they're then going to the high school, that there's some conversation with the high schools and make sure, because they're then going to a really big high school with so many classes, how to make sure that that transition for them, that there's some intentionality for their ninth grade year, that we're making sure that that transition happens, great for them. That can happen, so just making sure that we attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
The next item up on our agenda is the public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. Speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to your specific concerns about staff members being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable forum for fact finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to follow district communication guidelines found in the student handbook. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. Also note that it is not customary for the board to respond to public comments. The best way to correspond with members of the board is by emailing schoolboard@district65.net. With that, Adila, do we have any post for public comments?
I'll start off by calling the first three, Dr. Tricia Baker, Kelly Post, Tara Colville.
Good evening, Dr. Turner, School Board, Evanston Community. My name is Dr. Tricia Baker. I am currently serving as the union president for DEC. And I'm here to read a statement written by, on behalf of the Haven teachers that have been impacted by schedule changes for next school year. It has been brought to our attention at DEC exec that next year at Haven, 38% of teachers will be teaching a subject they have not endorsed them, meaning they have no certification to teach the subject they are being assigned to teach, none. Unlike elementary school teachers, we have a degree, who have a degree in elementary education. Many middle school teachers are what we call secondary certified, meaning they have a degree in the subject they are studied in and are certified to teach that subject from grade six through 12. We have been informed that Haven families received rationale behind the recent changes made by the principals, leading principals. However, this courtesy was not extended to the educators. So to reiterate at this time, a third of the teachers at Haven will be teaching a subject they are not endorsed to teach for at least half a part of the school day. This will negatively impact students and create a huge burden on our educators. In addition, a full two-thirds of core teachers at Haven will be teaching a new curriculum, either because they are, they removed grade levels or into subject areas they have not previously taught. Haven is the only middle school in the district where educators are expected to teach outside of their endorsed content area. At this moment, there are no plans from the district or building administration to provide training for these educators, nor is there any explanation as to why such dramatic changes are desirable or even necessary. Middle school educators chose a content to specialize in and to focus on as part of their teaching, training, teacher training, just like high school teachers. Others find a passion for teaching a particular content once they are in a middle school classroom. Anyone who has been taught, who has been taught by a teacher who loves what they teach knows this, their passion for this subject is often infectious and aspiring to students. At Haven Middle School, there is a documented pattern of content, knowledge, specialization, and endorsements being undermined and discarded. Educators are treated as cogs in a machine being moved around year after year from grade to grade, subject to subject.
My name is Kelly Post. I am also on the DEC executive team. If there is a vision or a goal in mind that is, that has not been shared with educators, nor have they been included in a contractually mandated scheduling committee that should be the place where a shared vision could have been co-created. The schedule was created in a vacuum by building administration. Does it make sense to this board to leave the educators out of the process? Is this what the board wants leadership to look like in District 65? As a school district and community, we should want our children to be given the best education possible at each school. In fact, our motto is every child, every day, whatever it takes. We ask this board and the community, are we living up to this motto at Haven Middle School? Community members, is this the quality of education you expected when you chose to send your children to Evanston Public Schools? Would you send your child to a high school where a teacher certified in math is made to teach a biology class and just hope for the best? We believe we all know the answer to these questions. Our students deserve better. They deserve to learn from teachers who have developed their craft. And as teachers, we deserve to be treated like the experts we are, with courtesy, professionalism, dignity, respect, and humanization. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tara Colville, and I am a parent in the Haven community. I have a current sixth grader at Haven and a freshman at E T H S who graduated from Haven last year. I'm reading this on behalf of the teachers at Haven Middle School. According to your board policy, you recognize the aim of public schools is to provide the best education possible for students and youth of the district. I fundamentally agree with this, and every day I try my hardest to uphold this value in my classroom. And again, this is from a teacher. And yet it becomes more and more challenging, especially as we take a deep dive into the proposed scheduling changes set to take place at Haven Middle School for the 2025-2026 school year. As of now, 67% of core educators at Haven are assigned into new content areas and/or grade levels. That means that two-thirds of the educators will be learning new curriculums and new standards. Furthermore, 38% of Haven core educators are assigned to teach subjects in content areas they aren't even endorsed to teach. Those certified to teach secondary math are scheduled to also teach science next year for the first time ever, with zero training or content knowledge to teach science. How does having us teach science provide the best education possible for students in this district? I want to highlight one of my colleagues who came to speak in front of the board last year, who is nationally certified, nationally board certified to teach science. She was taken out of her specialty and placed in an E L A classroom. Next year, she is still not slated to teach science, and yet we are. If eight out of 12 people slated to teach science next year are not endorsed, that leaves four science teachers to help mentor us. Unfortunately, only two of the four have ever taught the grade level they are assigned. How does this serve anyone? Who will support us? Who will mentor us? With over half of the school learning new contents and curriculums, who will be left to pick up the pieces? As of now, there isn't even a concept of a plan on how to get us trained. District directors are new and were consolidated from four to two positions. Will they have enough time to assist all of us to learn new material, new curriculums, new standards? With only 15 school days before we begin teaching these new contents, how is that possible? The other core subjects have taken a hard hit as well. Most E L A teachers will be teaching a new social studies curriculum, as they have now been assigned to teach social studies, leaving four teachers newly assigned to teach E L A without any support. If the E L A teachers are busy trying to learn a new subject matter and how best to teach it, they will not have time to help support these new E L A teachers. There are enough teachers with the correct endorsements to teach every subject. There is no need for these drastic changes. Is that my time? Can I say anything else? I can keep going? There's no need, there is no reason that highly qualified teachers are not teaching the content they are highly qualified and certified to teach. And there is no other Evanston Middle School where anything close to this is taking place.
Next, we have Melissa Rosenwig, Bridget Utter, and Gabrielle.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Rosenwig. I am a Bessie Rhodes parent. Parents from the Bessie Rhodes community have assembled tonight to publicly welcome the new school board and communicate our desire to work closely with you on ensuring that the final gear at our school is a smooth one, one with strong support and stability from D 65, and that our children's future success in District 65 is secured. Towards that end, we wish to share with you the results of a P T A survey that was conducted with families in March. We have emailed copies of the survey report to you for your review, and tonight we will present what support and stability entails based on these results. There are several key takeaways from this survey. To begin with, it revealed that there are families in our community who are still unaware or do not understand that Bessie Rhodes is slated to close at the end of the 2025-26 school year. The district has to continue to reach out to our families and communicate this information along with the range of options that families have for their children, especially to our parents for whom English is not their first language. Holding in-person meetings at Bessie Rhodes with sufficient translation services and childcare is the best way to interact with our families.
I'm Bridget Utter. I'm a Bessie Rhodes parent, and I'm sorry to the audience for people's hair we pulled and other things like that. Bessie Rhodes remains highly desirable for families with children in grades K through five. But for families with children in, in, in or advancing to the middle school grades, there's an incredible lack of certainty and support. The disruptions to the seventh and eighth grade classes this year continues to affect our community. As a result, extremely clear planning and support has to be provided to these families right away. All Bessie Rhodes families, and especially our middle schoolers, should have their first choice for school transfers, transfers honored, including placement in King Arts and other permissive transfers. We are particularly concerned with how our Spanish-speaking families are being told their only options are Foster or their neighborhood school, while our English-speaking families are able to advocate for King Arts or other permissive transfers. Our Spanish-speaking families deserve to be appraised of their options as well. For our K through four parents who are interested in rolling their children at Foster, they should be allowed to have their children continue onto Haven with their cohort of friends, regardless of whether or not their feeder middle, middle school offers dual language. This is the closest thing that District 65 can offer to K through eight T W E for our Bessie Rhodes families, and it should be honored. The district wants Bessie Rhodes families to inform them of their plans for the 2026 to 27 school year by this September. But it's important that parents understand this is not a final or binding decision. Too many uncertainties remain for our families to be expected to choose in the fall, including which additional schools will close, what other families will be doing, and where the Bessie Rhodes teachers will be placed. Thank you.
My name is Gabriel Anaya. I'm a parent of Bessie Rhodes student. I'll continue with the comments here. Only 20, only 22% of the students in the survey plan to attend Foster School when it opens. This includes six out of 11 children for whom Foster is their neighborhood school. If this trend holds with the current student body, the district can expect that fewer than 45 students from Bessie Rhodes will transition to Foster when it opens. It is clear from the survey responses that for Bessie Rhodes families, two tracks of T W E at Foster is not equivalent to the educational environment that wall-to-wall K through eight T W E provides. In fact, when surveyed, families registered tremendous interest in continuing wall-to-wall K through eight T W E in the district, but also harbor an extreme lack of faith in the district to be right by the Bessie Rhodes community. Clearly, there is still a great deal of repair work to be done, and the Bessie Rhodes community is still hurting and grieving. Part of that repair work will entail ensuring that the families who choose to go to Foster get taken care of. This includes holding bilingual, in-person Foster School welcoming events at Bessie Rhodes, a comfortable and a familiar space. Hosting several in-person interactions with the new Foster School principal at Bessie Rhodes to discuss the culture, climate, and curriculum at Foster. Retaining as many Bessie Rhodes teachers as possible in the new Foster School. Keeping Bessie Rhodes cohorts together by allowing K to four Bessie Rhodes students to attend Haven Middle School. Ensuring that families know that the siblings of Bessie Rhodes students who are currently in the district can attend Foster School.
Ashley Jackson, Marcia Belcher, Jim Belcher.
My name is Ashley Jackson, and I have a second grader at Bessie Rhodes. And many of you know I have big feelings, but I'm going to stick to the script today and finish with respect to the ask for our Bessie Rhodes families. For the 2025-26 school year, Bessie Rhodes deserves an explicit written commitment from the district to finish strong and without further disruption. Bessie Rhodes should be allowed to maintain its concierge to preserve continuity of student and family services. Our beloved Mandarin program should be reinstated and supported. For any Bessie Rhodes children who plan to transition to general education, be it after this year or the following year, they should be given free summer support so they can transition successfully to their new English language environments. President Hernandez, I really agree with you, but I agree with what you said earlier. Our kids are not widgets. There should be absolutely no more cuts to our staff, curricula, programming, or resources for the 2025-26 school year. We are still here. Our kids are still going to school. Our children deserve the same quality education as everyone else. The board made the decision to close us, but our school is not closed. We still exist. We refuse to be the source of any further cost-saving measures. Our students, the Bessie Rhodes community, a community of over 90% students of color, they have sacrificed enough. The board has made the decision. Now show up. Don't just schedule meetings. Come to the meetings. Show these families, show these students that you care. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Belcher, and I'm here to speak in support of the parents who wish to have some input into the building of Foster School. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak and giving them an opportunity to air their points of view. We know you've spent a long night for you. We know it's been a long night for you, and I feel for the job that you have, and I know that you take your job seriously, and you need to know that we, the parents, take you seriously and the responsibility that you have. I've been fortunate in my life that I've happened to know quite a few people who've done well in their life, and many of those people, many will say that they owe their success to the education that they received in the Evanston school system, and I want you to know that that is the word that goes out. So we understand the job that you have and the job that you do very well, but we also want you to know too that you're just part of the overall system that is so important to the education of our students, the teachers, administration, and the parents, forming a very, very important triangle in the support of our students. I last attended Foster School, and I think that's primarily the reason I'm here. I was part of that last group who left Foster School as a consequence of the fire. It was a night, I remember, sitting at the dinner table. I think I was about eight years old, nine years old, and somebody said, "There's a fire. The school's on fire." And I ran out. I lived on Foster Street, and from my stoop, I could look two blocks down, and I could see the flames coming up from the school. And kids being kids, I went down, and there were a bunch of kids jumping around. "Oh, it's over, school. No more school. No more school." Well, you know, it's not going to happen, you know? And within a couple of days, we were re-enrolled at other schools and moving right along. But the role that you guys play, one thing before a clock is kicking down. I remember one day I was in third grade, and I walked into the schoolroom, and my mother was there. And I was so surprised. I said, "What are you doing here?" And she said, "I'm going to be a room mother." It was one of the proudest days of my life. My mom was going to be a room mother. That parent involvement goes further than anything any of us can do, and thank you. My time is up. Thank you.
Okay.
Marcia was a regular candidate.
Okay. Jerome Summers, Taryn Nemo, Tasha Shepherd.
Hello, Honorable Board Members, hardworking staff, teaching folk. My name is Jerome Summers. I'm a two-term former District 65 Board Member myself, also went to Foster School. Was one of the first 100 kids to get bust. My family's been in the fifth ward since the 1890s. For over 100 years, can you hear me? Can folk hear me? Okay. For over 100 years, the general education programs have been designed to enhance and accentuate and validate children of European descent, and District 65 does a great job at that. I think our children of European descent are excelling at 90-plus percent, and I'm proud to be a part of that. That's phenomenal. You know, good job. Right now, there are at least 30, maybe even 40 or more classrooms today dedicated to enhance and accentuate and validate children of Latino descent in the form of TWE, newcomer programs, English as a second language, probably some special ed classes, and if they need that, I'm okay with that. They're Evanston kids, and I want them to thrive as well. But there are only six classrooms, six, out of hundreds of classrooms dedicated to enhance and accentuate and validate children of African descent, and that's the TWE program. And there was originally, because I was on the board when it passed, the sixth passed because that board kind of finagled and parliamentary procedured the second strand out of Kingsley, which it should have been, and sent it to as far away from the fifth ward as it could be at Oakton. God bless Oakton, though, you know, no question about that. But to have a school, from what I hear, this Foster School is supposed to have two TWE strands and two Gen H strands and no ACC strand in a community that is born to brunt of desegregation and have every kid bust out for 60, almost 60 years, for God's sake, and to not have an ACC strand in that school, in that place, says to that community and those children that other cultures and to validate other people is more important than the people who actually historically have lived here. And I just think that's, it's not a good thing at all, and you have, it was a board that took away that second strand that would complement the first strand, or, you know, to have two strands that can complement each other. It was a board that took that away, and it's a board that can correct that. You can do it. You have the power to do it. You know it. I know it. The good people of Evanston know it. The American people know it. How about that? And we need to get that done. So, you know, I'm here to say to you, please do the right thing. Have an ACC program at the fifth ward school, at Foster School.
My name is Taryn, and I am a fourth grade student in the ACC program at Oakton Elementary School. Each day, I begin with the ACC creed. I have faith in myself. I have faith in my teachers. I will accept my duties and responsibilities. I respect others, and I seek their respect. I have self-respect. I have self-control. I can learn if I study hard. I will learn because I will study hard. I love myself, and by loving myself, I can be myself and know myself. I believe I will achieve. I will succeed. I am the one who is talking. That's the ACC creed. I want to continue this creed throughout my Oakton career, and I look forward to sharing the ACC creed with students at the new Foster School.
Clearly, that's my daughter. But just to echo the words of Mr. Summers, I think it's really imperative that the ACC be implemented at Foster School for the very reasons that he gave, and just being an ACC parent, going to Oakton, being involved in this community since I was a kid, I know the positive impact that the ACC program has had, not only on my daughter, but all of her fellow classmates. Good evening. I've been an LA language arts teacher for 15 years, and I've taught in three school districts around the North Shore community, and I've found that when teaching students of color, the best results come when their own identities are at the center of instruction. Students need to feel seen and heard and know that their experiences and cultural identities are important and are the root of the classroom. This creates a strong community, no matter ethnicity, gender, or religious beliefs, where everyone can learn and be respected. If teachers don't acknowledge students' perspectives and how their lived experiences connect to the texts they read, then mostly students of color continue to feel marginalized and stereotyped, avoid reading, and are not engaged. It's important to have voices of color at the center of the texts they read. It's important for students to see themselves positively in the texts they read, which is often not the case with traditional classrooms and curriculums. Teachers have a responsibility to ensure that students of color learn and know about their historical contributions across content areas so they are empowered to continue the legacy of their ancestors. I know for a fact that the ACC teachers center their students' identities and create a positive environment for them to thrive and love the skin they are in. I know for a fact that the ACC program empowers students to be their best selves by honoring their past and their obligation to those that came before them. So I'm in support of the ACC being at Foster School. Thank you.
Next, we have Teri Shepherd, and then Dolores Cullen, and Ross and Olivia.
Okay, so that was my granddaughter, and that was my daughter. We've got three generations here tonight, all in support of ACC. Good evening, Superintendent Turner, administrative staff, and board members. My name is Teri Shepherd. I ran for the board in 1990-something. My platform was as an advocate for the Black students of District 65. My goal remains unchanged. My focus, however, is now on the ACC at Oakton. I want this learning opportunity to be extended across the district, particularly to students who will attend the new Foster School. My argument for supporting this curriculum remains the same. Unless I have missed something, Black students in District 65 are still performing poorly compared to their white counterparts. My belief is still the same. Black students do not see themselves in their curriculum. You cannot be what you cannot see. The ACC is at Oakton, is about to celebrate its 21st year, and I believe crossover is Wednesday, so I hope you all come. I'd love to see you there.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tomorrow, Tuesday.
Thank you. Tomorrow, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, guys, good. Okay, I hope to see you all Tuesday at the crossover. Many of the challenges of the founding teachers, Mrs. Braithwaite, Mrs. Berry, and Ms. Francis, are still in existence, lack of adequate training and support from the district office. I request that you prioritize the needs of the Black students in District 65 by reinforcing the ACC program at Oakton and creating a vibrant ACC STEM curriculum for the students at the new Foster School. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Dolores Cullen. I have a current kindergartner at Oakton. I am currently a community member on the policy board here for the Head Start. I just joined the ACC Parent Committee, and I'm also on the PTA at Oakton, will be serving as co VP next year, so get used to seeing me. But with that being said, my daughter's experience in Evanston has been overwhelming. I am a person who grew up in Chicago. I had a grandmother who worked for CPS for 40 years, and she had no respect and no real feelings for CPS and what they did and mainly did not do for their students. I moved here to Evanston because I believe in Evanston, and the reason I am here is the reason so many people are here. You cannot be what you cannot see, and watching my daughter get the kind of education that I was denied has been amazing, and it's something that I want for every child in this district. Please, ACC is so important. It creates fabulous children. It will be nothing but a mark of success for Evanston, so please, please, allow it for Foster School. Please.
Happy Monday and good evening. My name is Olivia Olson, and I'm a graduate of Haven Middle School and as of yesterday, a graduate of ETHS.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nathan Campbell. I graduated from ETHS in 2024. I'm a college and military here. I'll be going off to Morehouse in a few months. We both served on the city, I'm sorry, we both served on the City of Evanston Youth Advisory Council and are youth advocates in Evanston Cradle to Career. During the summer of 2023, we canvassed using the fifth ward, walking door to door, covering hundreds of residents and speaking with dozens of families and people, old and young, about their experiences with the district and what they would like to see from the district.
The vast majority were passionate about ensuring the new Foster School would be both a STEM school and an ACC school. We wanted to be here tonight to share our firsthand experience and remind all of the board members, new and old, that you are representing the residents and that it is the core of your oath and your purpose and the purpose of your position to represent their wants and needs and advocate for them. We hope this information will help you to make an informed decision. Thank you. Have a good rest of your evening.
Next, we have Brandy Otis. Let me pronounce that again. Brandy Otis, Martha Burns, and then Kate McCarthy.
Okay, hello? Can y'all hear me? All right. Good evening, board members and Evanston community. My name is Dr. Brandy Otis. I'm a postdoc in Black Studies at Northwestern and a founder of the ACC Parent Committee at Oakton. I am not an Evanstonian, and I am humbled that folks in this community trust me to advocate for a program that I have come to love and respect. I stand here in deep solidarity with the families, educators, and community members on the day of Malcolm X's 100th birthday to call for the full implementation of ACC at Foster School. I'm going to talk briefly about the achievement gap. The academic disparities in this district, commonly referred to as the achievement gap, are not new. They are persistent, predictable, and painful, especially for Black children. The district's report card shows consistent gaps in English and math between Black and white students, and while I'm sure this district is full of hard-working and intentional educators and administrators, the persistence of these inequities point to a deeper issue. I want us to consider what we traditionally call an achievement gap to be something deeper, an education debt, as Gloria Latson Billings calls it, a debt owed to generations of Black students who have been historically underserved, overlooked, and undersupervised across the nation. Focusing only on an achievement gap leaves us looking for short-term solutions to longstanding problems. It does not push us to situate the problem of Black education as one of deep historical neglect, that longstanding histories of discrimination, exclusion from education, unequal learning environments, anti-Black violence, and policy mean that the problems that Black children face are not of their own creation, that this country is indebted. I've learned in my short time here in Evanston that the successful reopening of Foster School is more than symbolic. It is your choice to do right by Black children and address this education debt. The community agrees that ACC is a continuation of what it means to do right by Black children. Since 2022, ACC students have scored at or above non-ACC students at Oakton in English. Dr. Tricia Baker's pre-pandemic dissertation showed gains in literacy for Black students in Oakton's ACC program, and my own personal ethnographic research suggests that the success of ACC is more than academic and curricular, it is social and emotional, and that is because of the unique opportunities that ACC provides Black children to be in the presence of dedicated Black educators who know what it means to educate Black children, an intentional, dedicated space that specifically affirm Black identity and culture. By fully embracing and supporting ACC at Foster, we are making a powerful statement that we are committed to educational well-being of Black babies. Let us not think of the current academic gaps as solely indicative of what Black students can or cannot do because we know they're brilliant, but rather a reflection of historical inequity that works to ensure their place at the bottom. Instead of simply asking what are the problems facing Black children, we might also ask, what do we owe Black children? Reopening Foster with a strong ACC program is not just a decision, it is a declaration that we love our Black children and we're ready to give them what they've always been owed. Thank you.
First, I'd like to congratulate the newly seated board members, Maria, Nicole, and Patricia, and then Andrew. I don't think I met you on the trail. One thing I want to say just to the One thing I want to say just to the new board members, that when you're in the executive session, I want you to remember when you have personnel matters, make sure that you listen and treat those personnel matters as if they're happening to you, and that's just one thing I'd like to say. Good evening, Dr. Turner and everyone else. I just want to say that I'm going to condense what I had to say because I feel that everyone that has came before me that has spoke about the ACC initiative and STEM program needing to be at Foster School, I concur with. I want you to know that my involvement in District 65 goes back to Orienton School in 1992. I am making legacy boxes for my children, and I found this, Orienton School, April 1995, and I was reading the newsletter, not because I was president of Orienton School PTA, but because I was just reading what we were talking about, and in 1995, we were talking about some of the same stubborn issues that we are talking about today. When I arrived at Orienton School, there was a payphone on the first floor, and as you come up the stairs, and I called my sister and I said, "You will not believe the beauty and the presence that this school has." I said, "My kids will get a quality education." Let's fast forward to 2025. I've been on every committee that I could be on in this district. I've done everything that I can to support this district. I have believed without even looking at race as the number-one factor, as the problem. Well, after 28, 29 years, unfortunately, race is an issue, and race is a very strong issue in this district. I've been trying to figure out, well, what is it? Because we have master teachers that are making an average salary of $70,000. We have a deusens now full of administrators that are probably all making six figures. We have student-teacher ratios that are low. We have every student in the district with a Chromebook or iPad. We have small class sizes. We paid $25,078 for every student represented in this district with operation and curriculum. Well, what is it then? What is it? And after all is said and done, what it is is that we have, sir, gentlemen, I ask you for professional courtesy as a board member, if you would extend just a few more minutes to me. I was trying to figure out, well, what is it? And it is what I did learn when I saw ACC, what I did like about the students in that program for Black students, for the first time I witnessed Black kids, you know, feeling confident and good about themselves in numbers. I don't see that anywhere else, and I'm saying that I know you guys should be tired of failing. You should be tired of presenting initiatives that are not working for the very students that you say they're working for. I'm on the SAP 3 Committee with Dr. McCoy and Kirby and Dr. Pitts as our leader, and I'm enjoying it because I do enjoy whatever I put myself into, I do enjoy it. But I'm here to say that I was shocked and appalled that Foster School would open up without ACC program or something to say that it's going to be geared toward Black kids. Your end product with Black kids, you're not doing it. You're not doing it. I don't know what it's going to take in order for you to, in order for it to change, but I'm asking you, I'm asking you to consider putting two strands of ACC and STEM over at Foster School. We'd like you to look at your training and professional development provided for the ACC teachers specific to that kind of curriculum. We're also asking for support for teacher retention into the ACC program and early education, training, and orientation to support new teachers in the ACC program, financial and resource support for cultural enrichment. And finally, to the Black people in this community, we need to stand for our Black kids because it is too many Black kids that are not making. We can do better, and God expects us to do better. Thank you.
My name is Kate McCarthy. I have two children at Lincolnwood Elementary and one child at Haven. I'm on the Superintendent Parent Advisory Council as well. I'm speaking tonight to respectfully call on each school board liaison to fulfill the full scope of their responsibilities, as outlined in the school liaison protocols on the district website. Given that this school board doesn't have any representation from schools in the sixth and seventh wards, the liaisons will play a critical role as life-changing decisions are being made around school closures and consolidations. In the past six months, it has become increasingly clear that some liaisons are not actively participating in the way this role requires, whether it's lack of visibility, failure to attend key events or meetings, or simply not responding to outreach from the communities they serve. This is not acceptable. These protocols make it clear that liaisons are expected to maintain direct and ongoing communication with the school communities they represent through school visits, PTA meetings, and other forms of engagement, and to provide accurate information about school board proposals that may impact those communities. With potential school closures and consolidations looming, it is essential that each liaison schedules a meeting with their assigned school community within the next month. These meetings should offer an open forum for parents to ask questions, voice concerns, and receive clear, honest information before any decisions are made. While liaisons do not serve as advocates, the protocol charges them with ensuring concerns are elevated to the superintendent and board and with keeping the community informed of proposals and policies that affect them. Now is the time to live up to that commitment. Before irreversible decisions are made, our communities deserve transparency, accountability, and a chance to be heard. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments for tonight.
Thank you, DeLa, and thank you to all our public commenters. Next item up is our updates and discussions. We've got a Foster School update and approval for Family Focus easement for Foster School. Maya?
So I'll be quick tonight. After a broad Foster School update at our last board meeting, there's no new changes and nothing really new to report in terms of an update that is any different from that, except for we do have one vote on the docket. We have entered, we are looking, seeking to enter an easement agreement with Family Focus for a portion of their property that will be, that the school used to extend the playground and the play area. We are adding piping for drainage. We are putting on a field track and a field light for that area, and that's the end of my report. So with that easement agreement is also joins the easement agreement, we already have an existence with the city for the same purpose, and it's basically to create a unified campus across the three organizations to serve the community and create the best possible playfield as possible. So that's the only thing that's on the docket for Foster School tonight. Any questions?
I move that the Board of Education approve the easement and land rights use agreement with Family Focus as presented.
Second.
Salem.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pinkard.
Yes.
Updike.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next item up on our agenda is a SAP 3 update and the approval of our Foster School principal, so. Thank you, Kirby.
It is with great pleasure that I announce the appointment of Charlisse Burkell as the founding principal of Foster School effective July 1, 2026. In the interim, Principal Burkell will serve in a dual role as the outgoing principal of Dr. Betsy Rhodes School of Global Studies and as the planning principal for Foster School. Her primary responsibilities remain in service to the Betsy Rhodes community while spending time preparing for the opening of Foster School in fall 2026. Principal Burkell's qualities and experience are deeply aligned to our leadership profile developed by staff and future families, and she was highly regarded by the interview panel. She is a passionate advocate for equity and excellence, directly supporting students from various backgrounds and cultures. Messages will be going out this evening to the Betsy Rhodes community and the broader future Foster community. I would like to invite Principal Burkell up for a few words at this moment.
Oh, let them make the motion, sorry.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Sorry for some of our care.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the board president to sign a contract with Charlisse Burkell to serve as the principal of Foster School.
Second.
Salem.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pinkard.
Yes.
Updike.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Good evening, D65 faculty, students, staff, families, community, and school board members. I am deeply honored to unite the strong legacy of Foster School and the amplified global vision we've cultivated at Betsy Rhodes. Foster School was built on the powerful foundation of ensuring every child develops a strong sense of self. Now returning to the very site where Dr. Betsy Rhodes began her remarkable District 65 teaching career, we will build upon this foundation. The renewed Foster School will bring students from across our community together, empowering a new generation of learners and preparing them to engage with our diverse world. As someone who embodies multilingualism and multiculturalism through my own family's heritage, I am excited to continue to help our students explore the rich tapestry of global identities and connections. Thank you very much. Mil gracias.
Congratulations. It's so wonderful that we now have a leader for our Foster School. The next item up that we have is our SAP 3 update, I'm sorry, SDRP update.
Good evening, everyone. We have Dr. Susan Harkin from Student Centered Services with us tonight, so she is going to kick off the presentation, and then we'll make our way through it with some information presented by myself, Dr. Beardsley, as well as Dr. Speth and Melissa, and then we'll have Susan close us out, so.
Welcome.
So, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Want to introduce ourselves for some of the existing board members. This is a presentation partially of what you've seen before of helping you understand our role. Would you like me to wait?
Yeah, just wait.
Sure.
Folks, if we could, please quietly, quietly exit. The meeting is ongoing. Thank you.
So again, thank you for having me tonight. Really looking forward to giving you an overview of how we're supporting the Strategic Deficit Reduction Plan in conjunction and in alignment with your staff.
Tell us who you are.
Sure. I thought there was a slide up there, but it's gone right now, so I apologize. So my name is Susan Harkin. We're with Student Centered Services. My partner, Dr. Greg Personnel, also assists with the support for Dr. Turner and the team. We were part of the Phase 2 portion of the Strategic Deficit Reduction Plan, and now we're supporting the team for the next, for 11 months, more than, less than 11 months now, for how we're going to support Phase 3. So when we walked into the door, we felt it was really important for us to acknowledge what are the current challenges that are facing District 65. After this year, you will have had three years of spending more than what you have. Your enrollment is going down, which has caused some of the challenges that we're spoken about tonight and some of the complexities of what's in front of us. There are definitely facility needs that are out there, about $188 million worth of identified needs, and those were needs that were, I think that number was from a couple of years ago, so that number is, if we index it, thank you, would be probably significantly higher if we keep all of the schools open. We are in a stage of increasing cost. Certainly, we know that that's just part of the economic climate and what's happening with inflation and everything else. Certainly, our students need more than they ever have. We still are dealing with the residual of what COVID brought forward for the challenges for our students, and that still is part of our education system. The next item that's second from the bottom, the district has lost its funding source of revenue that came through grant dollars called ESSER to help support how we help bridge the gap of what occurred for our students with COVID, and that's not spelled right, C-P-P-R-T. There also is a declining revenue source called corporate property replacement tax. There's probably not personal property replacement tax, where we had seen a significant increase in school districts, and that revenue has decreased as well, too. And one of the things that we felt was the most important piece that we hope to help support Dr. Turner with, who's done a phenomenal job of getting out there and interacting with your community, is how do we help provide transparent information about what are some of the challenges with the district? We all know how strongly Evanston supports its education system, but when we go back to three years of deficit spending, we're really at a difficult time right now, and so we're here to support the team on how do we, with our experience, both Dr. Personnel and myself have been with districts that have experienced significant financial issues, and how do you navigate still making reductions, but really keeping our students at the focus of our conversations to ensure that we continue providing the education that our students deserve? So we're in Phase 3 of this process of the Strategic Deficit Reduction Plan, and again, I apologize if this is something you're familiar with, but we really believe it's important to ground what this last phase is. So in fiscal year '24, there was an identification that there was this deficit that was not identified, and so the district immediately went into what can we do to make some cuts in real time? So at that point, there were $7.4 million of reductions that were made for the fiscal year 2025. Immediately, they went into hiring fees freeze, so they identified those positions that if they weren't critical to the current programming for students, we did not hire those positions back, and additionally, what positions were vacant, they did not hire. They went into reducing purchase services, which are where we spend money to have somebody come in that isn't a district employee and provide services. So the team went into also making reductions where they could and would not compromise our services to students, and they made reductions. And then, at the end of all this, they developed our framework to include stakeholders in a process as we made reductions, how we grounded the work in. a process as we made reductions, how we grounded the work in feedback from the community and engagement with the communities, so they understood the complexities and the challenges of what the district is facing. In December, we worked alongside Dr. Turner and her team to look at how do we stabilize the district? Originally, the charge was really looking at what schools we could close and talk about that as an option, and we felt what was most important is can we just financially stabilize the district? Can we put ourselves in a place that we don't compromise the district's finances and find some reductions that can immediately put us in a place where we aren't borrowing money and we aren't making significant cuts to the school district and programming without really taking ourselves through a thoughtful process in order to evaluate those types of decisions and really engage the community in a more thoughtful process, because these decisions in front of us are not going to be easy. And that's the one thing we repeat over and over again, this is not going to be easy. And we went through and cut $13.2 million, that I believe you've been seeing some of that come through publicly, as we've eliminated many positions specifically at the central office level, as well as looking at other areas that continued your current programming for your students and really focused on where can we make reductions that would not impact our schools at this point? It isn't easy, and you're going to have to feel a big difference moving forward, and I think Dr. Turner says it best, you know, you've been able to provide a very high-touch customer service when you had those additional positions, and now as we look to reduce that, it is going to feel differently. But we preserved programming, we preserved all of the things that are valued by our parents, by our families, by our students, that we could continue providing those. So the first phase was how do we make some reductions, but really preserve what's happening in our schools? There will be changes in our schools, but it really was not necessarily in the classroom environment. We're now in Phase Three. We are moving towards sustainability. We are looking at $15 million more of reductions. And as I said to you, this is not going to be easy. So we'll walk you through the timeline, because you ultimately are responsible for whatever proposed reductions that we are recommending and helping you understand that, because we will charge the board to make that final approval of what that will be. So as we look at financial sustainability, we're really looking at how do we balance the current budget so that ongoing, what we make as reductions, that we are no longer spending our savings account to subsidize what we're providing in the classroom? And if this was your own home, you know at some point you can't keep using your savings account to manage your day-to-day expenses. We also need to address aging facilities. We have roofs that are in disrepair. We have structural foundational pieces that need to be addressed, and that is critical for the district to make sure that its investment in its home, its schools, that we aren't neglecting those, and we're at critical time to start doing that. We are in a position that enrollment has declined greatly, and that is an opportunity for discussion. No decisions, but a discussion of what does that look like for us? And then ultimately, again, great conversation tonight, how do we make sure that what programming we're providing in our schools meets the need of our community, meets the need of our students, and we make sure that it's placed in locations that best support what's best for our students and how we can go about providing the optimal learning environment for them? So this is the important piece that we really want to reiterate with the new board members. Again, we're here to address Phase Three, to get us back to sustainability, that we aren't having these conversations. When we're talking about the district finances, we are not talking about what we need to do for students. I've been in a district where all we did was talk about the district's finances, and I was very happy when we transitioned to how are we investing in our students, how we are using our resources for best for kids? But until we get this piece done, we won't be able to have those conversations. We do have an internal steering committee. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of different viewpoints on what should be done here, and we're doing our best to take all of that information in to come up with the recommendation that your team knows is best within all of the layers of compliance, collective bargaining agreements, what we statutorily have to do, all of that has to be laid over. So there's no silver bullet, and so ultimately, there is an internal steering committee that will bring forward to you three to five scenarios on how to get this district back to financial sustainability and stability. We are then working with the Community Steering Committee. At this point, that group, which is comprised of three subcommittees, will come together to help give us the input and feedback as our experts into the proposed scenarios that are going to come to you. We've broken it down into three committees because we feel it's very complex, and if we can get people passionate about their committee and give us input into that, we'll, we bring them together at every meeting that they come together to talk about what work's being done, but we have a Facilities, a Finance, and a Programs Committee. The Facility is really looking at school capacity, where should our programs be, and the potential for school consolidations. And we'll talk about how this all fits together, because we hope to bring forward to you what will be a recommendation that has various options for you, because as we talk about part of this, it's a financial math equation that we will provide to you of what do we need to do to get the district back to financial sustainability? The Finance Committee then, based upon the feedback that they get from this facility, and the Programs Committee will come up with how do we get the district back to financial stability and model what that will look like? The last piece is the Programs Committee, which will say, okay, if we close schools, if we keep them all open, where's the optimal place that we will put programs in so that kids receive the services where they should? And this work works in conjunction with the Student Assignment Planning Committee and is taking that feedback in. So we do have other groups that are out there, and ultimately, if someone is not on one of the committees, they also can provide feedback through all the work that Melissa does, and she will provide you with an overview of what that piece looks like. So therefore, we are doing our best for Community Trust to bring information in a consolidated manner to you to help you make the most informed decision. Okay, perfect. All right, so jump there. All righty. So this is our timeline. In February, we regrouped after the board approved the $13.2 million of reductions to get us to stability. The team did not stop working. They continued to work to really bring all of the data points together in order to start our work with the Steering Committee, Community Steering Committee and the subcommittees. Right now, we're in what would be called Phase Three, Part One. We started meeting in April with the groups. This portion of the work we're doing is really level-setting, providing background information to the people on the committee, and really, at the end of the day, I think Stacy's got, Dr. Beardsley has the biggest lift here, which is really looking at our current buildings, again, with the opportunity with declining enrollment. If we were to make a recommendation that, should we close schools, she's developing the criteria for how we would come back with that recommendation for you. And again, that's a big piece of the stakeholder engagement as well, too. We will take a break over the summer. We want to give everybody a break, but that doesn't mean this team that's sitting in front of you won't be working. They'll be taking the information that's being provided and gathered at this stage, and we'll talk about the ultimate timeline of where we're going to next, and when we'll come back to you in June, to really then take the time based upon that information, and how do we make Programs, Facilities, and Finance merged together, then to come back in the fall, to then make a recommendation of how do we balance our budget, how do we review our enrollment, how do we look at our facilities, and how do we come up with a solution to the remaining piece of how do we get District 60 back, 65 back to financial stability? And that recommendation, if it were a selection to close schools, there's a timeline that we'll present to you on what that piece looks like. So, right now, again, Phase One, we're meeting. We'll have six meetings with the Community Steering and the, and the subcommittees from April 9th to June 30th. Our role as Student Centered Services are to be the guardrails for the internal team. They understand what's in front of them. We have the experience having been through it. How do we support them to bring this very complex problem together in a, in a way that it can be digested and understandable? I can tell you right now, I'm working very closely with Ms. Mitchell, and, you know, we've got some really great thoughtful questions that are coming through the Finance Committee, and I know Stacy probably has been the same way as well as Dr. Speth. So we're going to bring that together, and then the plan is that your last meeting in June will provide you with an update at that point in time. Again, what we want to reiterate are the roles. Ultimately, the board will have to make the decision, especially in light of if we, if there's a recommendation to move forward with closing schools, there's a whole timeline in the school code that we will need to follow. Ultimately, trying to get the district back to financial stability and sustainability, that also will be at your level to ensure that whatever those recommendations are. The internal team is the one that really will know the ins and outs and specifics, and they'll go through how they're supporting this work going forward. And again, our job is to provide the guardrails and experience from having done this in other districts on how we move this forward in a way, very difficult, very challenging, but at the end of the day, we've engaged and tried to do our best, as best as we can in an overloaded world with technology and information coming at you, that your community understands the challenge in front of us and what we're trying to do. I think I turn it over to you.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Harkin. So she talked quite a bit about the different pieces of the puzzle. This is really just a revisit of a previous slide from the last meeting, but it's the visual of all of the components within our SDRP ecosystem, as we call it. Just a reminder about being rooted in stakeholder voice, but ultimately funneling up to the Board of Education in terms of any decision-making for closures and consolidations potentially. So this slide, we also shared at the May 5th, I believe, committee of the whole meeting, but this is just a high-level synopsis of our stakeholder engagement that we conducted mostly during the month of April. So we had five in-person stakeholder engagement sessions. We complemented those with an online survey option, because we knew not everybody's able to come out and attend those meetings for different reasons. We've been working closely over the past month with our partners at Northwestern and the School of Education and Social Policy to conduct an independent analysis of all of the stakeholder data that we had gathered during that time. Since then, that information has been analyzed and turned over to the SDRP Facilities Committee led by Dr. Beardsley, who's been reviewing that analysis and really churning it to plug into potential consolidation and closure criteria. In addition, our Superintendent Parent Caregiver Advisory Council meeting is actually tomorrow night in this room, and so they'll be doing the same. So as you saw on the previous slide, the purpose is some checks and balances across different groups to see where we're landing on potential criteria that we can bring forth to the school board. Additionally, if you could just go back for one second, we want to be very transparent about this. So the analysis is available on our website on the SDRP section right on our homepage. So that's the analysis from our researcher at Northwestern. In addition, all of the meeting summaries, so all of the chart paper and sticky notes and activities, all of that was captured verbatim and is published online for each of those meetings. Additionally, you could use our translate feature on our website to translate that content as well. And then lastly, all of the creative solutions that we had gathered as part of those meetings are also available on those pages, too. So we're just going to talk at a really, really high level, because it's online and everybody can go and review, some of the criteria that emerged. So we crosswalked the written analysis as well as the in-person stakeholder engagement, and some common themes really bubbled to the top around each of these criteria. So the purpose of the committee and the parent advisory group is really to churn, what does that look like, what could potential waiting be looked like? So our first one that we looked at was equity, and really just, a lot of stakeholders stress the importance of access to services and programs, especially from students from historically marginalized communities, still emphasizing wraparound supports, mental health services, social workers, special education, et cetera. Additionally, walkability emerged as a top priority. There were some questions about, well, define walkability, what does that look like? It could mean different things to different people, but essentially, everybody's looking for equitable access to well-resourced, high-quality schools, and still within all neighborhoods in our community. The next one. So excellence was really broad, and I think that from those who attended the sessions, and I think from my colleagues, I think this was a difficult one for people to sort of grapple with around what does this mean? But essentially, what had emerged as themes is really sustained investments in education, in high-quality educators, in small class sizes, greater access to social workers, mental health staff, face liaison counselors, et cetera. In addition to engaging well-resourced classrooms, continued focus on enrichment programs, so before and after-school learning, and really modern instruction in classrooms. And then lastly, academic excellence in terms of rigorous, consistent academic standards across all schools for all learners. The next one, so finance. So really, this is thoughtful, thoughtful use of funds with a focus on long-term financial health and accountability. There was a lot of concerns raised around, and Dr. Beardsley presented a lot of data on the facility conditions, aging buildings, cost of repairs. There was a lot of concern that was emphasized about, you know, is that the best use of dollars? How can the district strategically prioritize while maintaining other important investments? So really, whether that's fiscally responsible. There were some suggestions, again, on creative solutions and fundraising and such, but also really future-focused planning. There was a lot of, lot of data, and you'll see that if you look through the analysis, around not making necessarily short-term decisions based on current enrollment, but really looking into the future, as well as, you know, what are shifts going to look like around enrollment in different neighborhoods, demographic shifts, housing changes, and Vision Evanston, things like that that are underway. And then the last one is really about facilities, lining school building capacity with actual enrollment, and took some notes here. Some individuals noted just shifting enrollment in buildings that were underutilized, some places, especially in some of our middle schools, which may feel a bit overcrowded, but, you know, may shift over time with the demographics, but also just flexible planning, cautioning against permanent school closures or anything that feels like a one-time decision that we can't, you know, potentially walk back from as we change later. There was a lot of creative solutions around flexibility within buildings for other services within the community, childcare needs, community partnerships, expanding pre-K, et cetera. So I encourage everybody to go online to our website to read more in depth, but these are the, were the top-level themes that had bubbled up as part of that analysis and engagement.
All right, so I will spend just a brief amount of time talking about some of the things that we've covered in the Finance Subcommittee. So first of all, the overarching purpose of the Finance Subcommittee is to analyze the financial impacts of the recommendations coming out of the other two subcommittees, out of Programs and Facilities. There are six responsibilities that that Subcommittee is charged with as well, and all of those detail how the group will achieve that overarching purpose. Some of those responsibilities will not be achieved prior to our break for summer, so I just wanted to be sure to call that out. For instance, the collaboration with HR, that part won't happen until we come back in the fall and start really working through the plans. So some of those things just will not be able to be accomplished during this first spring session. Next slide, Susan. So now I'll just at a very high level talk about some of the things that we've covered in those first three meetings. So the April 9th meeting, our first meeting, was really what I like to call School Finance 101. So it was a very high-level explanation of what school finance is, where we get our revenues. from, how we spend our money, what fund accounting is. And then that really allowed us to go into a robust question-and-answer session regarding our expenditures and the way the district receives its money. We also revisited the why behind why we were having the conversations, and that being the structural deficit, as well as the facility needs that we currently do not have an identified funding source for. That second meeting on April 23rd was all about risks and vulnerabilities. So we did have some continued discussion on the School Finance 101 because there were some things that we didn't get to get to during that first meeting. But that second meeting was really focused on those risks and vulnerabilities with the goal being to lift some of those things up, the risk vulnerabilities that we had not thought about. So we were really leaning into the committee to provide some of those, some of those things for us. And those three questions, we had the group work on. We split the entire committee into three different groups, had them address those three questions. What are potential unintended consequences? What are some financial assumptions that carry the most risk? And then where might the plan be most financially vulnerable? Our most recent meeting on May 7th featured a guest from PMA Securities, our municipal advisor, Bob Lewis. So he spent the entire time walking the group through different financial levers available to the district in terms of financing. So at the end of the meeting, the committee really had a much better understanding of the pros and cons of each. So that will help us as we move forward into our next work for the next three meetings, and then as we move forward to the work in the fall. Next slide. So what's next? For these next few meetings, we will, as a committee, analyze some facilities maintenance and operations expenditures, and then move into scenario building. So how will we incorporate expenditure reductions, revenue generation, as well as some of those financing options that we talked about at May 7? How will we incorporate all of those toward a financial, a sustainable financial future? How will we do so in the most equitable way possible? So we will be looking at the RIA as we, in this next meeting on Wednesday, which is our next meeting. And we'll definitely be looking at the RIA during that meeting. And then also, how will we ensure that the reductions in one area don't result in greater costs elsewhere? So really, looking into those reductions and making sure that we're not going to unintentionally increase costs above what we're saving.
So the next committee is a program Subcommittee. So our purpose is to inventory district programs and their effectiveness and make recommendations to the Facilities Committee. Ultimately, we're going to provide input around a cohesive plan, and we want to optimize program placement and ensure equitable access to opportunities. I can't see this deck, so I'm looking at my computer. Every single time we review a program, we look at impact, academic and social-emotional learning data. We also look at demands and any unique facilities that might, the program might need. So next slide. We started on April 9th with just a general overview of the programs we're going to be looking at. And then each subsequent meeting, we go through and take a deep dive. So we did African-centered curriculum on the 23rd, King Arts Magnet on May 7. We're doing dual language this Wednesday. We'll do an early childhood on June 4th and a found a report on June 18th. Both dual language and early childhood came latter, later in this process because we are leaning on the SAP 3 process for both of these. At each meeting, we have program teams that present specific information and data about their program. And then a committee, our committee uses guiding questions to analyze the programs. Our goal is to make recommendations, and we've been very specific with our committee that we're not setting policy and we're not cutting programs. So what we do is we utilize a set of five guiding questions every single time we do this analysis, and then we gather this information. And we work with one of our Northwestern partners to come up with a program. So are the programs located where families need and want them? What does data tell us about student residence patterns? And how does a program location affect access and travel time? Which programs are producing the strongest student outcomes? And what facility or location factors contribute to that success? How would a school or program relocations, closures, or consolidations impact students, families, and equitable access to these programs? And how can we optimize the use of space and resources while ensuring programs have the necessary facilities to support and maintain equity, quality?
All right. I have the Facilities Subcommittee to bring it home. All right. So the ultimate purpose of the Facilities Subcommittee is to develop a long-term facility plan for facility improvement. In the short term, we are focused on developing categories and criteria to inform modeling for scenarios for potential school closing. If we can go on to the next slide. In our meetings, essentially, the first three meetings, we've been really working to get familiar with relevant data to inform categories and criteria. Initially, we started with demography, the demography report and the master facility plan. Meeting two, we introduced the racial equity impact assessment tool and went deeper on the demography and master facility plan. The committee had also put in additional data inputs after meeting one, so we vetted those as well. As we shifted into meeting three, we took the input of the community feedback, the feedback from the community sessions and the survey, as kind of the next layer of information that we're putting into our process. And we added in density maps for where the ELs are, which includes TWE students. So we included TWE E as well as TWE, TWE, TWE and TWS. So all students in the TWE programs, as well as EL students more broadly across other programs, to understand where the students live, looked at King Arts also, because that 2024 demography report has students in their neighborhood attendance boundaries. So the committee wanted to understand and how those students distribute themselves naturally in our system. Again, put the racial equity lens in. Moving forward, we are going to, essentially, we have a few things going on. We started facility walkthroughs this weekend. We did seven schools on Sunday. We do the last batch a week from Thursday because we didn't want four evenings in a row this week. And then we are coming back together later this week to process in the next layers of data, and the group is going to come together. And the next layer also includes the input from the SPAC meeting this week as well, and some additional data requests around facilities and facility inputs. And so they're going to come together as a whole group and really try to churn in this meeting and next meeting to get to their final categories and criteria while holding also kind of this understanding of impact across different groups by race and culture. And I think that captures, oh, the second deliverable there is just a list of must-haves. They're holding that it is important to understand the different assets of common spaces within the buildings in this process. So thank you.
So we've broken down this Phase Three into four parts. And one was just kind of working behind the scenes. So again, we're in Part One with coming back to you in June as a Board with an update on how it's starting to settle with the primary focus on if we are going to make a recommendation to you about closing school, what is the criteria and feedback that we receive to land on what that will look like? Again, the team here will work over the summer to then use that data based upon your feedback and input on what's presented to you on June 23rd to re-engage either the end of August or beginning of September to continue the work with this committee, then to really come up with three to five scenarios to help, guide you, and then get your feedback on what those next steps would be. Part Four is always, if we move forward with whatever version of the strategic deficit reduction plan, how do we support our students, our staff, our community, our families in that timeframe? Should there be, whatever that recommendation and impact will be. And for those that were on the Board previously, our expectation is that we will present that and make sure that you've got an opportunity to give us the feedback that you, and adjustments that you want to have brought forward. And I think that worked and was highly effective the last time because ultimately, we want to make sure that you, one, have the information to make an informed decision, and that if you do have suggestions as the governing body in relationship to School District 65, that you have the information in order to make the recommended vote to move forward with getting us to this final stage. And again, our role as Student Centered Services is truly walking alongside your very competent and highly qualified staff to just guide them through this process and bring the information together so that it can be easily reviewed and digested, hopefully by your community, but more importantly, by you as you have to make this hard decision that will be in front of you. And I think the next piece is if there's any questions.
Appreciate you and the team presenting the comprehensive look for the whole Board, and in particular, our new Board members. I hope you benefited from kind of getting this overview of a little bit of the history, but also what's ahead for us. I'll open it up for any questions from colleagues.
Yeah, I have a question. The 15 million total, it says estimated for the fiscal year '27, I believe it is. I know that in the community meetings, it was on the slides, it said 10 to 15 million. That's a big window. Can you tell me more about that?
Sure, sure. So one of it is, we really want to see where you end the year because you have made these significant cuts. You, your practices in accounting maybe worked as paying bills on time. So what we really want to ensure is, once we see where this year ends, we will update all of the projection modeling. At this point, we think we're probably closer to about $12.5 million. But absolutely, as soon as we get the updated financials for June 30th, we will be clear with what that exact number is. But we really want to get the year closed out to understand what are the projections moving forward and what that number is.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple, can I keep going? Okay. So then I have a question as well about what do we mean by sustainability here? So what could a district of our size expect to expend? For instance, if we don't want to be taking on deferred maintenance at excessive rates? Does this cut of possibly 12.5 million to 15 million, does that get us just to being in the black? Or does that get us to truly sustainable with long-term maintenance with, yeah?
Yeah, that's a great. So first and foremost, the 12.5 million will get you back in compliance with your fund balance policy. That's really it. And it really gets you to the point that you shouldn't have to borrow money. And one of the challenges right now in Cook County is the fact that depending upon when tax bills go out, that 90 days is really critical to avoid short-term borrowing. To your point, it does not address anything related to the $188 million that's currently out there, as well as building some sort of annual reinvestment back into your facilities that would be appropriate for a district this size. We will be talking about that and are talking about that with the Finance Committee, and so we'll bring that into the conversation. However, I think there's three pieces. One, right, how do we get back to that we're financially sustainable, can pay our bills? Two, how do we work towards making sure our deferred maintenance gets completed? And ultimately, is there a way for us to figure out how to get an ongoing financial source to make sure that on an annual basis, you're reinvesting into the most important asset in the district beyond your kids and your staff? That we make sure that that's not, we're not back in this cycle, and that will be a conversation we bring forward to you, right? Do we need to identify an ongoing revenue source to do that? Do we need to make further cuts as well, too? And really, at the end of the day, it will be, here's your options. We're really not going to tell you what to do, but here are your options, and here's the impact of that decision. A great question.
I have a question. How will, how will we assess the change in student populations that will occur with the opening of the new foster school? How will we determine the actual numbers of students that will be moving from school from the place where the students are distributed from back to foster school and what those implications will have for enrollment at those schools?
So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Beardsley. She's actively been doing that already in preparedness for that.
So, two pieces to this answer. First, that 2024 demography report gives us projections on, essentially gives us the number that if all students, based on that enrollment trend that we have over time, that live in the foster attendance boundary, attend foster, it gives us kind of a max enrollment ceiling, okay? And so the number that's stuck in my head right now is 477, but I can't remember exactly which year that is. But that's based on our kind of enrollment trends and looking at the forecasting he did. If all of the students that lived in that foster attendance boundary at the enrollment rate that we practiced were to attend, that would be about our number. We also know that when SAP 2 wrapped up, there are families, families that are currently attending Willard, Lincolnwood schools other than, you know, that will, that live in foster boundaries but are in different schools. If you've already started in those schools, you will have a choice about whether you stay in that school or whether you return. So if the year that foster opens, a family has a second grader at Lincolnwood, they will have the opportunity to decide if they stay in Lincolnwood or return to foster. We do no longer provide transportation, however. Okay? So one of the things, the comments today around Bessie Rhodes noted that we plan on pushing out a survey to the folks that live in the foster attendance boundaries and that have students in District 65 in September, like mid-September window, to say, what is your indication about where you are going to attend in the upcoming school year? Are you going to attend foster? Or are you wishing to continue to attend the school that you are in? That will give us a ballpark. We are not going to require that families reregister. They're already registered in the district. If they're at a year that would require reregistration, they will have to. But it won't be an additional step. But it will be a form that will be asking the families to make, you know, to let us know what their plans are. All right? And we will then kind of continue to follow up and monitor those numbers. But we are, you know, that's how we're going to get our initial look at what our projected enrollments will be.
Is there a deadline? Do we have a hard stop for that?
We will give a hard stop, and then we'll look at what our response rates are and do further outreach. And that might involve community events. It might be going to school events, things like that. This also allows us potentially to get this information into the back-to-school curriculum nights to try to get, make sure that people know this is coming to be able to, you know, increase. But it's going to take a good bit of outreach to try to get a very solid response rate.
I have a question. Can you go back to the timing slide again? Yeah. When did you say the break was going to be?
Over the summer. So our last meeting is June 18th. You have a Board meeting on June 23rd. The break will pretty much be the whole month of July and a couple weeks into August before we reconvene the subcommittees.
Okay. So who is participating in Phase Two?
Phase Two is your internal staff.
Okay, oh, so Part Two is internal staff. Okay.
And what it boils down to is then, how do we take all the information together to bring back then, based upon what data the team collects?
Yeah. One thing I just want to say is that there's so much anxiety in our community over this subject that the timeline that we've laid out, while I appreciate our need to be very thoughtful and thorough and deliberate and collaborative in how we're making these decisions, I just urge us to really share some of what the thoughts are prior to potentially, you know, late fall, just to try and alleviate some of the anxieties that are, that are in our community and to really lean into the communications with the individual school districts and when we're, or school buildings, and working with PTAs and things to get their feedback on attendance and things like that so that we can be as transparent as possible. You know, I think there's just, you know, every day, there's some rumor of, oh, this school's closing and that school's closing. And, you know, we just don't know the answer to that question, but in the absence of that information, rumors are going to fly.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. And we'll certainly, as we look to build out that Part Three, we'll certainly make sure that we're working as effectively, trying to find that right balance between being thoughtful and engaging with the community, and then sharing when we're ready for what would be the recommendation.
I have a couple of questions. And one to say, like, I really appreciate the process. I appreciate how SDRP has coming together. And so my questions aren't because I don't trust the process or definitely the people who are leading it. I think you are doing a phenomenal job. The Board is responsible for the decision, right? And we were going to have to live that decision. And being, if we hear about foster school and we hear about, you know, we're talking about decisions made in 1970. And so in some sense, I feel like we're the most passive in this process. Information is coming to us, right? You know, interpretations, and we're making decisions on that, but we're not necessarily in the process to hear it. in the process to hear it. So I think there was a phenomenal, Tamara, you were talking about the conversation about finance and the folks who came to explain it, which I would imagine that board members should hear that as well. But also understand OMA. And so I know you've had this experience. So can you say a little bit about the models for, you know, the challenge of, you know, we're not making the sausage, and so I'm not, you know, saying, hey, let us do it. But how do we really know, understand the details to hear it and not always get the interpretation of it?
Rely on the board.
And it's so complex. I'm not, I won't even say, because I think you're doing a really good job of giving no. So it's not at all a critique, but I'm just, I'm struggling with the responsibility, but with being, not necessarily, you know, being part of the creation of the, you know, and if we get to a point where like, mm, nah, what does that mean? Like, if we're like, no, we don't like this criteria, well, the process has already been created. So can you help us so we can all understand that? And thank you.
Sure. So I think there's a couple of things, and I would defer to Dr. Turner. But I've previously allowed board members, as long as you're not violating Open Meetings Act, and to, you know, where maybe your area of expertise is or isn't, I really encourage you to really maybe come to that piece, and I'll let Dr. Turner work out those details. Because I think, at the end of the day, right, it is very complicated, right? I would assume you probably could have access to staff members. And again, now I'm going out on a limb, so Dr. Turner told me to shut up when I'm supposed to shut up. But I'm assuming if you have specific questions that you would like to have asked, because you want to prudently move forward with being educated in what you're doing, my assumption is balancing all the work that they have on their place, but making sure you are informed with what you need. I'm assuming there probably would be a protocol, and I'll let you speak to that, Dr. Turner. Because to your point, absolutely, we don't want to be at a place that all of a sudden we haven't brought you along in the process as well, too. So I will defer to Dr. Turner if she wants to add anything to that portion of the conversation.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Harkins. So two things. One, I think we kind of talked to the board about this. We're setting up a plan for onboarding schedule for board members to meet with all of the respective departments and teams to get the onboarding that you need, starting now, really in June, throughout the summer, during the availability of my team when we're not in the midst of working all on, all of these things, as well as not trying, you know, getting in some mental and physical health during, with vacations during that time when everyone else is on vacation. And so that will be set up in an onboarding schedule. I think, I'm going to volley it to Melissa, because we know that board members have been asking specifically around the attending these events. And so again, we wanted to make sure that we got clearance from our legal counsel, who just gave us clearance. And so do you want to share what was shared with you so that board members know what their participation can look like, so that we're not in violation of OMA? So I'll turn it over to you, Melissa.
Yeah, we wanted to be especially mindful of that, just given the significance of the decisions and making sure that we were doing everything by the book. So I have reached out. You should have all gotten a message from me about attending one of the upcoming SDRP meetings. Essentially, we can have two board members present at those meetings without being in any issue or concern of violation. I believe that the thought of our team was really to allow that opportunity to all board members to participate, knowing that you all have a vote and an equal responsibility to make decisions. That being said, I believe if it's the desire of the board, where it's maybe one individual who's going to repeatedly, or serve as a liaison to a committee and share updates with the rest of the board, I think that's totally allowable. Right now, we wanted to allow everybody in these next couple meetings, the opportunity to be able to participate. And then, as Dr. Harkins mentioned, they're going to pick back up in August again, so if there's a more consistent schedule for that. But yeah, we heard those concerns in wanting to be able to attend, though. So I'll be reaching out to you all as I got some final updates from some other board members with the upcoming schedule for the next meetings.
And once we have proposals, and this, right now, has really been the superintendent and her team engaging the community. In your experience, is it always the superintendent and the team, or is there, should be a role that the board plays? Also, once we're, you know, when we're saying, hey, here's what it is, we have to think about what we're going to do, and just getting your experience and having, you know, been through this process.
Yeah, typically, I have not had board members that have actually sit on it, because it is that challenging piece of the Open Meetings Act. And so I believe it's always been, in my experience, that we keep you informed and we find ways to make sure that you have information, so that we're bringing you along in the process, and also using board meetings, right, really as the avenue, because we don't want to do things that aren't transparent. So I think, you know, it's either more frequent updates potentially here, and I know it's already late tonight, right, with your board meetings, but I think, you know, is there a balance? And I know you do have a standing agenda item, which is this, this specific topic. So I think, you know, at this point, can you add into your board meetings maybe also so that, one, everybody in the public knows what you're hearing, and you're voicing your concerns, asking your questions, so that your community knows, or you stand with all of this? So I, you know, I think there's all of those options. Typically, though, because of the Open Meetings Act, it makes it very challenging for board members to actually serve on these types of committees. And at the end of the day, right, we also don't want to leave the impression that the committees are the decision-maker. And I think, once you come into it and participate in it, it gives the lens. Really, at the end of the day, we're getting their feedback. And again, we have people at various viewpoints in our committee structures, right, that have very different opinions. And so, right, that's the challenge in the beautiful democratic process, which is, how do we land with trying to hear voices, trying to solve the math equation and do right by our community and kids? And so I would just suggest that, you know, either probably more frequent, or, you know, I think it's really great if you can come attend, because I think you'll learn a lot from that.
Thank you. And that was just important to sort of talk about this, as people were saying, what is your role in doing that? And one, like, just for the record, because I know Northwestern was mentioned, and I know this, I have nothing to do with the analysis that Northwestern is doing for SDRP. Disconnected for that. Just want to put that in the record. Thank you.
I have two more questions. Some things are best left up to imagination, but I heard you say additional funding sources. So I'm put, I want to, I want to push at this, because I'm concerned that, on the slides, it looks like we're going to make it to the end of SDRP 3, and we're done. And that's, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think we're going to have hard work to do after SDRP 3. So can you tell me, and I don't want to leave it up to my imagination or the community's imagination, what is additional funding sources?
Sure. So ultimately...
Don't you have that on the slide, Susan?
I thought it was on one.
I could have missed it. It's 9:00 PM.
Can you go back? It's the slide. Keep going.
I think it's on finance.
It is. Right there. Go back.
But it's even here to explore potential referendum options.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you go back to that other one, it says funding sources, and then it lists the other options that are other funded.
I did not say it out loud, but absolutely, the math equation also can afford for, if there's support to increase taxes, to afford some of the financial challenges in front of us as well, too. So ultimately, reductions. Ultimately, revenue source that comes in to help support this, and I think that's going to be what's in front of this community. It's, you know, certainly, you know, we can go further into additional reductions, but I can't promise you this time that it won't make significant impacts to what we're doing in our classrooms and in our schools. But yes, the conversation was potentially a referendum.
Thank you.
And this, actually, this, this right here is really the question for me. We need to understand that, and we're not in that conversation. And that is what my concern is, we're going to get to the point where we're going to have to be making decisions that, you know, and I understand Tamara's going to understand it and everyone else, and I just want to figure out if there's ways that we can figure out how to learn it and understand it, so when we present it, maybe proposals like that, we can understand it.
So, and that would be my recommendation for the June 23 presentation, right? Once we get the information, because if this community group can't get behind, potentially this as an option, I think this will be your litmus test. Is this something we should move forward with? And so, so I think we're trying to educate this community group to see, help them understand this, with us coming back to you in June for what those might be and what those options might be. Does that feel right?
Yeah, I mean, so, yes and no, but in some sense, that we were vetted by the community to sort of help in this process. And I trust and respect the community, so I'm not saying it doesn't feel right, but actually, what I feel, I hear you saying that you present these, and if the community decides life safety bonds is not an option, but maybe it should be an option, it's not going to be on the table. And I think, and so that's, that's the piece where I'm grappling with. And I mean, we're not going to, you know, just, that's just a reality, and I just want to put, I'm just trying to bring this into the space when later someone's like, oh, why didn't, it's like, well, it's a, the board role is, is unique in the situation of OMA in terms of how you're actively involved in the process. But, okay, thank you.
And can I jump in real quick? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut anyone off. So in January, when we had our municipal advisor out, he presented a schedule that involved coming back to the board in June to re-present some financing information. So that's in the plan right now. What I, what I'm hoping is that he'll be able to come to the June 2 Committee of the whole meeting, and then that way, he can give a full presentation, a full outline of all of the financing options available. And so then, that way, the board will have that opportunity to sit with that from June 2 until June 23. And that'll be an opportunity to ask him all of the questions. I do have the slide deck that he used for May 7, so I'm happy to share that with Adila, to share with the board as well. So you're welcome to all of that information.
I have one last question, too. So, and this may be for you, Dr. Turner. But, so how are we intentionally engaging, so there's persons and communities who typically won't be represented in these volunteer meetings that are repeated over time? So just how are we intentionally engaging racial minority communities, low-income communities, Spanish-speaking? And then, will be, will we, as a board, be able to see data about where, demographic data about where, where, I mean, we have the totals here, but will we be able to see, you know, here's how many folk from this and this school, or black persons, or low-income persons?
Yeah, I, we have the information from the application that was provided to us by each of the individuals who were selected to serve on the committees, so that's something that we can definitely look at providing to the board with the information. That being said, not everybody, you know, responds to every question, and some people choose not to self-identify, but we could provide the information from the committees on that. Additionally, just in terms of some, like, engagement and outreach, some of what we've been trying to do over this past year in various phases is, you know, going into places where families and community members are at. So I know, was it two months ago, or some, Dr. Turner attended the Fifth Ward Block Club meeting, and we're trying to meet families there. Additionally, we've given this presentation at our bilingual parent advisory committee meeting to try and engage families. We always send out, I think, one of the reasons that we've been successful with Phase 1 and 2 of our SDRP engagement, and we can always get better and reach more families and communities, of course, but we've really intentionally partnered with community organizations to help share information. So that's Evanston Cradle to Career, the Evanston Chapter of NAACP with our PTA organizations, Evanston Latinos, different groups to be able to share information, knowing that everybody may read the Fast Five or go onto the district website, but they may be reading something in their church bulletin. So we send it to all of our faith-based leaders and ask them to share the information out. So I do think that some of our engagement rates have been a little bit higher there, but there's definitely room to improve, and we're always open to suggestions. So if any board members or community members have ways of connecting, I think that's definitely something we're interested in knowing.
Yeah, I was, I was going to echo the same thing. You know, I want to make it clear, and I know new board members are coming in, but we, we don't claim to be the experts at this. We're giving it the best run that we possibly got. And so what we do welcome is, is the, the feedback and insight of ways that you believe that we can target those marginalized communities that we haven't already thought about based off of our outreach to, in certain spaces and places in Evanston, as well as being thoughtful about partnering, partnering with our community partners. This is also making me think, and I don't know, and maybe you can chime on this, is, you know, it goes back to Nicole's question of, really, how can board members be involved in this process? How can board members create a space where it's open, that's led by you all as board members, to glean any feedback and allow us as district, maybe potentially to be in the space to be listeners, and you all facilitate it, right? I'm thinking of things that I'm told the district used to do, the coffee, the real estate meetings or something that, right, like, so, so I want to say very transparently, me and my team welcome that, because I do think, and what we made clear on about the first three or five slides, is that the decision, the Board of Education holds the decision. So I think the, you all having some stake in that, in the community of holding that and hearing what is being said, that oftentimes may not be shared with the district, because we're making the decision when we've said to them that we're not, may open up this level of transparency to you all that we're not getting. So I just want to say that very, very openly, that we're willing, you know, we're open to that. Like, we have no reservation on, on that. What that would look like as, again, relates to OMA and how you do it. We can partner with our legal counsel to figure out how to do it. I don't know how the cafes were done.
Yeah, we've coordinated them in the past with previous boards, and as one of the parent mentioned in public comment, you know, each of the board members has a school, serves as a school liaison, which has been a good avenue to be able to ensure that all schools are represented and have connections. So in the past, we've seen board members do events by feeder patterns, going to the, you know, a lot of our principals host coffees and things in the morning and going out. So Adila and I have always partnered to support the board in terms of that kind of engagement and outreach. So that's something that was, is being planned as part of the communications team onboarding for board members that'll be coming up.
You know, one thing I was thinking about, too, is we can go, you know, the aldermen have their ward meetings, right? So that's one way where we can invite ourselves as part of the agenda, right, and attend some of those ward meetings where folks, again, these are spaces that are already, you know, happening, that are, are engaging folks. Again, I used, I used to, at the beginning of my board, board tenure, was host coffees with another board member, so that, again, within the parameters of OMA. So that's another option as well, you know, and we host them in the Second Ward, in the Fifth Ward, where there were, you know, really, I would try to target the Latino community to kind of let me know what's going on. So, and then bring back that information to the rest of the board, saying, look, here's what I heard, and this is what folks are thinking. So again, I think us being proactive, if you feel, if you all feel that's a need, or there's a missing, there's a missing aspect or viewpoint, that's, I think, where we could step in as board members, right?
We need a big period of, we need a period of waiting.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Any other questions?
Comments, questions, concerns? One question for me, you know, so, given the current federal administration and the attacks on, on, on some of the good work that we've done here, is, is the possible loss of federal funding factored into that last number, that, the 15 million? So, okay, yeah, so we're, yeah, I guess not. So, you know, the, it's not...
And it's one that all school districts are grappling with right now.
And all school districts are grappling with this. I'm just saying, you know, it's something that we, of course, has, definitely has to be on our radar.
Yep.
Well, that's actually going to make it even more complicated.
Yeah, absolutely.
On the deficit.
Right.
If I can go back to, just, just because I can be the consultant that just raises this, if you do make the decision that individually you're going to engage in various groups, I would establish a protocol of what you're asking, because at the end of the day, you're just one board member, right? And, and one, we have to protect you, because, right, people are going to want you to say certain things, promise certain things, and again, you're a group of seven that ultimately will have to vote on it. And again, you're a group of seven that ultimately will have to vote on it. So I would just recommend absolutely whatever access you can give to groups that potentially we don't normally get feedback on is important, but a structure in order to get that information in a way that we can put it into our ultimate decision-making. I would just caution us that we make sure we follow through with what that will look like. I think it's really important, but I think a structure is really important as well.
Can we work with you?
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. Can we make sure that the first initial conversations with board members and two-on-ones are established? That criteria is established. And that's usually how Dr. Harkin starts off with kind of hearing and then kind of naming collectively what she heard and kind of creating some, some level of some parameters for us. So thank you for naming that.
Yeah, so again, really important and you have access, but really you need to make sure ultimately you're one vote. And so we want to make sure we manage that information. I wish there was a magic wand that solved all of this, right? Because I think that's ultimately what we love, right?
The reminder is that, is this, is that again, I think we, you know, we all come with, as board members, we, we have these issues that we all each care about tremendously, right? All of us campaigned and worked towards this role to try to make an impact on some of the things that we care about. The reminder is that again, we're, we're working at a systems level, right? We're, we're trying to make sustainable substantive change at a systems level. And it's really easy to get caught up by the folks who have our ear immediately, right? So the reminder is this, is that, so we, we have to have that structure and, and remind ourselves, okay, we are working for all students for a whole system. And what is it that we can do to, again, really uplift the work that's been going on and planning all of this? To create a sustainable and high-quality educational system, right? Not just a school, not just a classroom, not just a teacher, but a whole system that, that we're in charge of, right? That should be financially sustainable and then really guarantees incredible social, emotional, as well as academic outcomes for our students and families. So again, that, that is the thing that we always have to remind ourselves of. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item up is our, the April 2025 finan, I'm sorry, the 65 Financial Systems and Best Practices, as well as our 2025 financial report.
Thanks, Dr. Harkin.
Thank you, Dr. Harkin.
All right, so the presentation, this presentation is an opportunity to revisit a framework that was presented in September of 2024. So just about, what's that, nine months ago? So it's an opportunity to discuss the progress that we've made so far towards the things that are in that framework. So the items that are here on this slide, again, meant to be a framework that shaped the major focus of the Financial Services Department for this year, for FY25. That focus was to ensure that we were aligning systems with best practices in terms of creating efficiencies, improving the timeliness of delivery of key financial information to the board, and improving our checks and balances throughout the department. So I will talk through some of the actions that we've taken to date as we worked through this framework for this year. This looks like a roadmap to me. So it gets us from point A to point B. All of the points that, or all of the bullet points there are how we are getting from point A to point B in this framework. So you'll note that there is one bullet point there that is highlighted in red font, and I'll talk about that a bit later. That one's a bit different because we had to pause it for this fiscal year due to the work and the focus that we had on the SDRP. So, but I will talk about that a bit later. So now I will move into just speaking about some of the things that we accomplished this year that we're proud of and how we addressed all of these bullet points. So the first thing up, monthly reporting. So we made a commitment to the board and the community to provide a financial dashboard, and we've done that. That financial dashboard is available on the website, on the Financial Services section. Through that, we've increased accessibility of our monthly reports. So our monthly reports have always been available on Board Book, but for people to get to them, they would have to know to go to the website, go to the Board of Education link, and then scroll to each agenda item. So we've put those monthly dashboards on that page there on the Financial Services website. So the monthly reports are visible to both the board and the community. Additionally, the full monthly financials have been enhanced a bit for readability. So in the past, those monthly financial reports, again, you'd have to go to Board Book. People would have to click through each individual report to see information. So what we've done is streamlined things, put everything into one report, divided into sections, so the user can just go through, look at a financial report, scroll to whatever section they're interested in looking at in one document and not have to click through five or six different reports in order to get information. So we think that that's a much more user-friendly experience with our monthly reports. As far as timely recording of financial activity, one of the things that we really wanted to highlight there is this is something that Dr. Turner began last fiscal year by directing that all bills relevant to FY24 be paid prior to June 30th of that fiscal year. The reason that happened is that it had been discovered that at times bills were being held from one fiscal year to the next. And so that was identified by our independent financial auditors from illuminate. Once that was identified, Dr. Turner gave that directive to pay those bills in the correct fiscal year. And so we're continuing with that because that is definitely a best practice. Also, financial reports are being presented to the board as of the close of the prior fiscal month. In the past, those reports were sometimes as much as four months behind for the board. So for instance, in May of 2024, the board was looking at financial reports from March of 2024, whereas this May, you're looking at financial reports as of April 30th. So we've closed that gap by a month and provided that timely information. Moving on to budget control systems. One of the features that we've been sure to engage in our financial software is to not allow requisitions to move forward if a budget line has been exceeded. So that is an additional feature that we have to ensure that we're staying within budget per each budget line. Additionally, members of the Financial Services team conducted what we call a training tour. So they went to each school to meet with the administration, the administrative staff there as well, and then met with individual departments here at JEH to make sure that there was, and provide a better understanding of the financial software, understanding the budget reports because what we learned was that there was not a lot of familiarity with looking at budget reports, with using the financial software, really having an understanding of the budgeting process and the expenditure process at all. So really proud of the work that the team did there with getting that training tour done. And lastly, what we've done is create system-generated and scheduled reports. So cabinet leads and department heads are now receiving system-generated budget reports. This can help them track their spend down of budget lines and then monitor progress towards budgetary goals for the year. In terms of accounts payable processes, we've moved from perhaps what were several check runs per month to just one large AP check run per month, plus our payroll liabilities and utilities runs. That aligns us to board policy, which that was not happening in the past. And then again, the board was receiving a list of bills. Right now, the board is receiving a list of bills in advance of payment, and that was not happening in the past. The board was receiving a list of bills that was two months old, sometimes four months old. Those bills had already been released. So it was more informational versus reviewing the bills and having a chance to ask questions, perhaps pull a bill back, et cetera. So we've changed that process as well. As far as the use of P cards, we've enhanced some of those practices. There were P cards that were, or the P cards are the district's credit card. So P cards were issued in individual staff member names. And what we did was change those P cards that were in individual names to department cards. So we have reduced the cards down to five department cards. Those are technology, buildings and grounds, financial services, nutrition services, and superintendent. Many of the miscellaneous purchases are charged to the Financial Services Department card, but that's only after review and approval.
Please specify superintendent because I want, I do not want to go on record. My good friend Jeff is here from Evanston now. He's ready to create a narrative. So I do not have, and I just want to say that again, I do not have access to a P card. I never had one since I've been in this role, even when I started as the interim superintendent. And so that, every card that you are, that she's referring to, and I'm going on record publicly for this, is held in the Financial Services Department with a whole system to check out. I don't even know what the P card looks like. So I just want to be very clear with everybody in stating that because I know the narratives that we'll create.
All right, thank you, Dr. Turner. Additionally, we implemented a P card manual that had been developed, it started being developed in April of 2024, again, under Dr. Turner's leadership. So that P card manual began development in April 2024. We finalized it in August of 2024, and now that P card manual is in use. All of the users of the P cards, for instance, I mentioned the Financial Services card being used for miscellaneous purposes. So as people are using that card, they have to get approval. There's a form, they have to sign off on everything. So there's a whole process with it that we've implemented. In terms of the contract approval process, that process has been enhanced a bit this year. The district had a robust contract process in place last year, but we've enhanced it even more to the point where cabinet members are bringing scopes of work, if they have any contracts, bringing a scope of work to weekly check-in meetings with Dr. Turner. And also requesters are required to provide an adequate funding source. So if that account number that's put on that statement, the SOW is not adequately funded, that contract does not get approved. Additionally, if a contract is going to exceed the amount that was approved, then that contract has to go through an amendment process. So we're not just allowing contracts to go above what was approved because that was an issue in years past. And so now I want to talk about some strategic accomplishments that we are very proud of in the Financial Services Department. So as far as site-based budgeting, we have expanded that site-based budgeting. It was in place in the district, but we've expanded it a bit. One area that we've expanded it is implementing for various expenditures like lunchroom supervisors, agency-related services like our temporary agencies and staff recognition. In the past, all of those expenditures were charged to one district-wide account. So it's very difficult for building leaders to know how much they were spending in these areas and difficult for district staff to determine what school was spending this or what department was spending that. So we've broken that out and made it site-based so the building leaders can have a better understanding and we can at the district level as well. As part of that, we partnered with the Human Relations Team on creating a staffing allocation for lunchroom supervision. Again, that was more of a, a building thing where, oh, I need a lunchroom supervisor, so we'll just call Stivers and get a lunchroom supervisor out. Stivers is an agency. Whereas we put in place this year, there's a formula that goes into place and says this building can have X number of lunchroom supervisors, and that's what we hold the buildings to. As far as the ACH participation, so I'll jump down to that last bullet point because it's tied together. So that last bullet point there, development of a new vendor form, there was a state mandate in 2022 where vendor information was required to be collected in terms of WBE or Women Business Enterprise, Minority Business Enterprise, Small Business, or Veteran-Owned. That vendor form had not been updated in the district. So we had our team update the, update the vendor form, so we're collecting that information. So as part of that, we reached out to our existing vendors and asked them to complete the information on the form and asked if you're not participating in the ACH process to get paid, would you like to do so? And so that generated increased participation in our ACH process. As one of our checks and balances that we implemented, we now have a two-party review for ACH system setup. So one employee will look at the information that's coming from the vendor, put it into the system. Employee number two will review that and make sure that everything is correct before that information is finalized. That helps to prevent payments going to the wrong vendor. And it can also be a fraud prevention as well. We also engaged a new municipal advisory firm, PMA Securities. I mentioned Mr. Bob Lewis earlier. Also, a new independent financial audit firm. That firm's name is Whipfley. The district's independent financial auditors, Baker Chili, had been in place for five years. Recognized best practice in governmental accounting is to reevaluate and perhaps competitively bid audit services every five to seven years. So we engaged in that process, and we now have a new financial auditor that will be auditing this fiscal year and then the next four as well because the contract is for five years. And then I already covered the development of the vendor form. Other accomplishments, cost containment strategies. We partnered with the transportation team to consolidate some pre-K routes, and that's reduced some costs for this year. Our grants manager has also been doing some proactive grant monitoring to reduce the return of funds. So in years past, there's been sometimes where all of the grant funds just can't be spent, and then those funds are getting returned. So we have her being much more proactive and reaching out to people who are responsible for those grants to hopefully reduce the amount of funds that are being returned. And then lastly there, the audit finding corrective actions. So for the FY24 audit, there were two findings identified. One related to the TRS annual financial report, the other related to the bank reconciliation process. So that TRS annual report finding, we have corrected that by now having the payroll staff proactively review the TRS data to ensure that it's accurate and submit it on time. What really caused that finding was last year, the staff was just pushing reports through with errors on them and not addressing those errors. And then that resulted in that large amount that had to be paid in this fiscal year that should have been paid in last fiscal year. For the bank reconciliation process, right now, we have all of the reconciling adjustments that are appearing on the bank rec. Those are able to be tied to supporting documentation in the general ledger. So all of that has been, everything that's a reconciling adjustment can be substantiated. We have the support to back it up. So that has been corrected as well. So when the audit team comes in to audit this year's books, that should resolve both of those audit findings. Future considerations, again, that development of position control system, that was what was in red on that slide that had all the bullet points. We had to pause that due to our focus on SDRP. So that's a project that we will collaboratively work with the Human Relations Team on as soon as we can get some breath from SDRP. We will put some time in the focus there. Timekeeper software is another collaborative project with Human Relations as well as technology that's going to increase our efficiency and accuracy within the payroll department. And we are looking to implement that next year, next fiscal year as well. And then lastly, workflow management. All of the changes with SDRP Phase 2 implementation are going to require some workflow adjustments within our financial software and then staff training as a result of that. So there may be people in the system responsible for entering requisitions or approving requisitions that have never done so. So it's going to require some hands-on training with that. So a lot of focus will be on that in the next, in the coming months as we shift into the new way that the district is going to look as far as staffing. And that is all I have for that update. Questions?
Thank you so much, Tamara, for presenting some of the controls as well as refined processes around our finances. Colleagues, are any questions?
I just want to say, like, I, I feel like you went through this, but I just want to point out, this is a tremendous accomplishment. And I just, as a board member, I feel, yeah. I feel so much better. I, I feel like in the past, we saw reports that were, you know, pretty much meaningless because we didn't know how much had been spent. We didn't know what was paid, what was unpaid, how much was left in budget. And these changes and controls that you've put in place just give me so much more confidence and help us be able to make the decisions we need to make because we're looking at accurate information. Thank you to both of you. This is really big.
Dr. Turner, it's just systems, processes, and procedures.
And I do want to give a big shout out to my team, my Financial Services Team, and my Director of Financial Services is back there, Faye Kung Lee as well. So could not put all of these things in place without the team supporting, so just wanted to be sure to give that shout out as well.
I just have one question, and I know, you know, I think that all of the work that we're doing in SDRP is really a result of, you know, a lot of this work not having been done prior. So thank you so much for all of this diligence and detail-oriented and systems building here. You know, I think one of the things that the community is always asking is, you know, there was a lot of irregularities prior to your arrival, Dr. Turner, and now that we can see sort of what that means, what would your, you know, as a superintendent of the district now, how can you, or what advice do you give to the board, or how can you, as the leader of the district, ensure that the deficit spending that was not budgeted for doesn't happen again?
That's a good question. How can, your question to me is?
What recommendation do you have for this board? And what can you do to help support the work that Tamara's been doing and that to prevent the malfeasance or, you know, issues that we encountered over the last several years?
Yeah. I think, I think my recommendation to the board is what, you know, the existing board and what, you know, you all as new board members, I think, ask the questions, right? Like, you know, you come into a very unique role of not knowing the intricacies of how things go, and so feel free to ask the team questions. We don't have a problem with answering any of your questions. Of course, Tamara, as the CFO, does the more finite in the weeds with her team, but she's very knowledgeable and skilled, and I think, you know, we have a great system where it's the checks and balances. I follow that same measure when I meet with my team weekly, right? I'm asking questions about their work. I'm trying to really get to peel in the layers of the onion and really understand of all of the different aspects. And I think the more that that happens, it allows us to have honest conversations. It allows us to see other avenues and things that we may not see. And I think that has been helpful for me and my team in terms of your level of inquiry. I think as four new board members coming in, it takes us back to ground zero because you're asking very minute things, which allows us to check and make sure, you know, like, that you have the clear understanding that we're transparent, and then you help us to see then what aspects is necessary for us to be transparent and forthright with the community. I think we've, you know, collectively, and I speak on behalf of the existing folks that's up here, we've, we've really tried to get very much more succinct in the processes and much more transparent around having the open conversations. And I think the more we have these open conversations around where the challenges are, where we see things go with the budget, it just helps people to see, like, we have nothing to hide. Like, we, we're giving you everything, we put it in the monthly reports, and so I think that, that piece helps. I think, you know, the control systems that we've put in place in full transparency really, really is mechanisms to keep me even honest as the superintendent, right? As I stated before, I don't own a P-card. I have to go through the same process as every other employee. I can't require or put a system, a process, or a structure in place that I don't hold myself or expect them to hold. Like, I don't, my rank as a superintendent doesn't make me elevated from not holding true to the same systems processes that I have staff to do. And so they'll tell you, you know, I'll go the long way of, you know, submitting for a reimbursement and go through the same process that any of them would have to go through just to keep the controls in place. Because really what it's about in full transparency, creating systems, processes, and structures should outlive people. And the practice we've done in this district is we have operated under where practices have been hijacked or held under people, and then when they leave, it's such, I like to use this term, that we keep continuously uncovering. It's called manufactured chaos, right? It's just manufactured chaos because this is what this person has done, and you can't figure it out. It's so convoluted. It's not the most efficient way to do business. And the amount of time and work that we put into this work is just crazy. I just think about in previous years, the payroll department really kind of operate, I feel like it's, and Faye and Tamara will be able to tell you a little bit more. I haven't heard the whole, you know, they might come in on Saturdays and fix problems, but it was almost like they worked 24 hours a day, seven days a week because they're here on Saturday and Sunday trying. That doesn't even make any sense, right? And so how do we just are thoughtful about putting the systems in place, making sure they're as efficient and productive and accurate, and more importantly, it's giving us, it's getting us a return on our investment so that we can all work toward a level of work-life balance, if that makes any sense? And so I think, I don't know if I answered your question, but I think that's, that's just where I am right now. I just don't want to continue to work this hard. I just don't want my team to continue to work this hard. So it's about putting the systems, the processes in place, and then letting it, the visual that comes in my mind is a gear. And when things are moving, that gear is constantly churning on and on and on and on, and there's refinements. You might have to add some oil to it to kind of, if it starts to slow down, but it's continuing to move, and that's what we're really trying to get to by creating these systems, processes, and structures here in the district.
It's a flywheel.
A flywheel. Oh, it's called a flywheel now, a flywheel. Thank you. I'm old school. It's a gear. Flywheel.
Flywheel starts moving by itself. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tamara. Great job.
Thank you.
Next item up is our proposed action items. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The 2025 financial report, I'm sorry.
Yes, so the April 2025 financial reports have been provided for your review, and those reports are publicly available in Board Book as well.
Now we have our proposed action items. Omar?
I move that the Board of Education approve the items, accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion, and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, resolutions authorizing notice of dismissal of educational support staff employees as noted, April 2025 Board of Education meeting minutes, gift acceptance for Lincoln, Nichols, and Walker, and the May 2025 bill is payable.
Second.
Any questions or comments before we vote?
I have a question about the gifts. Just as far as the ONE Fund and ensuring equitable access to resources across the district, particularly wanted to ask about the screens AV in the cafeteria space. Is that representative of all schools having similar capabilities?
So specifically, that is a gift from the Nichols PTA to the Nichols Cafeteria, and that is part of the technologies plan for essentially space improvement, and that work has already been done at Haven and Shoot. So it actually does really, it is an equitable contribution, and it relieves the district of a technology expense that we had in our plan.
Thank you.
I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. So the next item up is our amended school year 2024-2025 administrator contracts. I move that the Board of Education approve the amended school year 2024-2025 administrator contracts as noted.
Second.
Any questions or comments before the vote?
I just, Tiffany stepped out, but I just really want to just remind the board that these, if new board, well, no, but existing board, but to tell everybody, these are the 2024-2025 administrative contracts. When we engage in the bargaining agreement with the DEC Teachers Union, we paused on anybody receiving any type of updates. Once that was passed, the board came back later, approved for those administrative increases, and this is just approving the contracts to match that essentially. Just so, just wanted to give that public commentary.
Okay, I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next item is our bids for grounds and landscape maintenance.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended bid for grounds and landscape maintenance services.
Second. Take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next item up is the approval of the flooring bid.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended flooring bid.
Second.
Any questions?
Is this the Foster School flooring bid?
Yes.
This is the one that was like the increase in price?
Yes, if you want to come talk about it. This was the Foster School one, right, Kurt?
No.
Oh, this is Omar.
No, this is not.
Oh, this is not that. I'm sorry.
This one in particular is the flooring that is going into Willard, Washington, and Haven after we abate asbestos this summer.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Are these the three schools we're taking offline to do this?
These three schools do not have summer programming.
Right. Okay, just thanks for that clarity.
I remember that.
Yeah. These are the three schools. Sorry, Omar. You want to just tell us something? Omar, what you got to say?
Yeah, this is for the project, summer project that we have district-wide, not the Foster School.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. It's not Foster. Thank you.
Thanks, Omar.
Did anyone second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Hernandez seconded it. I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next item up is your approval of the 2025 Cintas dust mop service agreement.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended 2025 Cintas dust mop service agreement.
Second. Any questions, comments, colleagues?
Yeah, I'm curious here for with the removal of the uniform rental here. Is this cost being passed on to employees? What's happening with the uniforms?
So the cost is not being passed on to the employees. There are a couple of things going on here. Over the last couple of years, custodians and maintenance team have had the opportunity to wear the Cintas uniforms, which is a shirt-pant combination, or to wear a District 65 T-shirt that is essentially a T-shirt for maintenance team. The vast majority of the employees opt for the T-shirt and their personal pants. So we will continue to provide the T-shirts as well as, you know, we'll kind of move in and out with sweatshirts or things like that for appropriate seasons. We'll continue to do that. We did also engage with the union, with ECAMA, on this, so they know we're moving away from this. Part of the agreement, though, to get out of the agreement, we needed to purchase the uniforms that were part of this whole rental deal. Those uniforms will continue to be available for the employees that we have, and they'll use them, and then we'll phase them out ultimately in time. But no additional cost is being passed on to the custodians or maintenance teams.
I don't think I've ever seen them, but just in the District 65.
The maintenance team wears them a little bit more than custodial.
Our warehouse folks.
But all of them had them, and so it was time to get out of the contract.
I'm thinking of our custodians at the schools.
And this does also include then the cleaning of the dust mops, replacement of those, and the mats on the entrance of school, which are really difficult to clean with.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can we, did we get a second for that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Salem, great. Okay, I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next item up is the approval of nutrition services contract with District 202.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended nutrition services contract with District 202.
Second. Okay, I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next item up is approval of recommended meal price increase for fiscal year '26.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended fiscal year '26 meal price increase.
Second. Any questions or comments on the meal increases?
I was just curious, the impact on the reduced cost? What is that? It's still minimal. It looks like 40 cents, I believe.
Yeah, it's an incremental and small increase.
What was the increase?
The, I would, I honestly don't have that in front of me, but it steps down, so it's 40 or a little bit more.
Okay, okay.
I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Updike?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
The next item up is our fiscal year '26 consolidated district plan for title and IDEA grants.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended fiscal year '26 consolidated district plan for title and IDEA grants.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this?
Is it possible, really high level, just to give like a few brief bullets on what the changes were?
Anybody want to speak to the changes to the consolidated?
Changes to? Well, for IDEA, there's no changes. We're just continuing on with our strategic plan to address areas like continued improvement in reading and math for students with IEPs, decreasing suspension rates for our students with IEPs, same thing for students who are at risk. So all of our efforts are aimed at that in addition to our paraeducators. There's about 47, I believe, paraeducators that are funded through our IDEA grant. So no real changes, just continuing on with the strategic plan.
That's great.
I have a couple of questions.
I did provide additional detail, I can provide additional details, though, to really lay out exactly what the funding is geared towards.
So a couple of places in this, there is a baseline metric for suspension rate, a race socioeconomic status, and students with disabilities. It was blank or it had a dash. What is that?
Yes, so I can generate that information for you all and provide that information at a later date. I don't have that available, but we did provide it in our EPI presentation, so I just need to pull it from there in order to provide you all with that. And I can do that as early as tomorrow or Wednesday for you guys.
On page 28, it says that there's quarterly progress reviews on the strategic plan that are publicly available at the district's website.
The quarterly progress reviews aren't the EPI report?
Yeah, they're.
Well, that's just one part of the strategic plan, though, right? So that's not the KPIs then, right?
Yeah, it's not the KPIs.
So just a flag for us. I know that this has a function that, you know, you don't need to picket that, but just to flag for us that we need to be posting that. That needs to be publicly available. And then there's another one in page 47 that says that IEP data includes disaggregated data for black, Latinx, and duly identified students. I thought that it said that was available. I can't find that data, so I'm just curious where that is publicly available.
It was an update in our last EPI.
It's on the EPI?
Yes, but again, I can just pull that information to make it accessible to you all in one space.
Okay, thank you. I went through the EPI really quick earlier tonight, and I just didn't see it. I'll go back again. Okay.
Let's go for the vote.
I'll take the vote. Salem?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pinkard?
Yes.
Weimer.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, next item up is the board organization and approval of the 2025-2026 board meeting dates. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended 2025-2026 board meeting dates. Second. Any discussion on that or concerns?
I just want to note that four thirty is hard for folk who have business hour jobs.
Yeah, I agree, I know, we, you know, we've, we've talked about this in previous board iterations, it, it is tough. I know for the, for the, for the Dr. Turner and her team, again, I know it's, again, as we mentioned earlier, right? We really want to try to strike a work-life balance for everybody. Yeah, I mean, again, four thirty is, is a bit tough for folks who, again, like you said, Andrew, you got your families and there's things that you want to do or get done. You got to prepare dinner just before you leave, come to a board meeting, right? You don't have, you don't get time to do that, if you're coming in four thirty, so I, I know the challenge. So, I mean, we used to, we used to start our, at least committee of the whole meetings, I believe it was at five thirty if I remember correctly, so we can, we just put it back an hour for this pad in our last iteration. But, again, something that, again, we're open to discussing and, I mean, what do, what do folks think? I mean, can we, four thirty, five thirty, what, what are, what are folks' thoughts? And Angel as well and your team, I mean, I know it's, again, it's a tough balance here in regards to making sure that we get enough time to discuss this business and, again, there's no winning, it's a rock and a hard place because when you start at five thirty, then we'll end, we'll end up later, right? So, it's, it's really no winning either way, so. But would, would folks be amenable to maybe going back to a five thirty start for the, to the committee of the whole meeting? I'm, I'm fine either way.
Five thirty does feel a little late. I don't know if five or.
Commitment.
I was going to say five o'clock.
Okay.
Five?
Yes.
A friendly amendment, I guess? For the, so then there's also questions around the structure of the, um, let's see. That's not it, yeah. Um, you know, we, we can discuss that in the committee, committing school liaison assignments, so. So, are we, are we okay with five o'clock start for committee of the holes? And then, of course, we're going to have a discussion about what does that look like, all right.
And then six o'clock for, sorry, six o'clock for the regular meetings like today, or is that staying at six?
Are we okay with six o'clock with regular boards? Is that?
Can we do the other one first because in some sense we're talking about.
Yeah.
Change the structure, to the committee structure?
I agree.
Yeah, that's right, because there is, there is a, yeah, okay, okay, so, so let's, yeah, we're going to hold our vote on that, but let's look at the committee and school liaison assignments. So, in honor and respect to the OMA, I know I've reached out individually to some of you, you've reached out to me in regards to what the school board assignments in the past week individually, again, in, in compliance with OMA. So, what I do have in regards to, and I'll read off, or at least what I've come down to in, in the draft for the school liaison assignments, let me know if you want to change, but here's who I have. For 2025-2026, Bessie Rhodes, the board liaison is Omar Salem. For SHUT, we have Maria Forrest Updike. For DAWs, we have Andrew Weimer. For Dewey, we have Maya Wilkins. For early childhood, we have Patricia Anderson. For foster school, we have Nicole Pinkard. For Haven, we have Maria Forrest Updike. For King Lab, we have Nicole Pinkard. For Kingsley, we have Maya Wilkins. For Lincoln, we have Andrew Weimer. For Lincolnwood, we have Nicole Pinkard. For Nichols, we have Omar Salem. For Oakton, Sergio Hernandez. For Arlington, Sergio Hernandez. Park, Patricia Anderson. Rice, Patricia Anderson. Walker, Omar Salem. Washington, Sergio Hernandez. And Willard, Maria Forrest Updike. Is there any, are we okay, is there any changes that you'd like to see in this draft? Okay, all right, the next piece that we're, we're looking at too is the committees, so we're looking for chairs. And let me find that document here.
It's on the back.
Oh, it's in the back of this one, okay. I did send a, oh, here we go. Okay, so for curriculum policy committee, I have Maya Wilkins as the chairperson and Andrew Weimer and Pat Anderson for curriculum policy committee. Joint District 65-202 Committee, we have Nicole Pinkard, Sergio Hernandez and Maya Wilkins, but I'll, I'll, I'll stop here and I'll ask, Nicole, you have?
So, one question is around the joint, whether the joint District One and the city school liaison can be combined? I mean, they're not, they have to stay, can they?
Sixty-five and two oh two?
So, you have sixty-five and two oh two, that's one committee, and then you have the city school liaison committee? Or this, you know, they're both around relationships with the schools and they both don't meet that often? So, they're separate as opposed to having a partnership committee, which is, you know, whether these can combine, be combined into one committee that does both of these things? So, I'm not saying make them separate, but it's.
I think the only difference is, is in the joint district, it's just district, it doesn't include the city.
Right, but you, I would hope that in that joint, that we can then work together to then go to the city one, you know what I mean? So, if it's the same people in some sense who are in those, that hopefully there's a relationship and shared understanding, so when we're talking to the city, the two oh two, you know, we have a, you know, maybe not, but it's just like, they don't meet that often in the same way as like curriculum and personnel, like they're not, like how, the city liaison is what, twice a year? And sixty-five is twice, what, three times?
I'm sure it'll be once.
Right, yeah, so it's like, these are, those are simple committees and would hope to try to bring a coherency to them.
So, the, so what I'm hearing Nicole is that we combine or propose to our partners, because we'll, so this will have to be proposal to, to our institutional partners at two oh two as well as the city.
Maybe it's another way.
Point of clarification.
People, it could just be the simple, it's having the same.
Right.
All the same people, oh, I see the same people going on those committees, okay.
That's what I mean.
Okay, okay, all right, I'm sorry. I misunderstood, yeah, because that would be a lo- a longer conversation, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah, okay, what do folks think? Is that, again, that's up to?
I think it's a good idea and I'm willing to, if you want to switch me out of the school city, city school liaison one, then move my, like Maya can double up there and then it's, you all are the same people.
Okay.
If Maya's okay with that.
Are you okay with that Maya?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so what we have then is for the, for both, the two oh two sixty-five committee as well as the city school liaison, it's Nicole Pinkard, Sergio Hernandez and Maya Wilkins.
I think more importantly, we want to change the committee, right? And have it be a community partnerships committee?
We don't know if we can, because it's not, we co-own, it's easier right now to just have the same people because these are committees that we.
Oh, understood, got it.
But, but it doesn't mean we can't have that conversation that has an agenda item for both, right? Because I think it would make it more efficient and more, yeah, I mean, again, having two separate, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, but, but we could definitely look.
Between the joint district two sixty-five two oh two and city liaison? So, two things, the two oh two has already, they sent us something and proposed one date next year? That date is in January, that date is in January and they have already approved this, their board, that one day. Right, so it's on the books, it's an approval for this.
Collaborative.
Right, so. This city school liaison, I believe this is three times, I hosted once.
Yeah.
Luke hosted once and Marcus hosts, hosts once. So, this, this city school liaison committee meeting happens three times a year.
But would we imagine, given our situation, that we need a lot more collaboration with our city agents, you know, city folks? And so, I mean, it's three, but hoping to try to lean on them a little bit.
Yeah.
If it's the same three people, I think you can function.
Yeah.
Internally for us, it would essentially be one committee and.
Right. All right, so, so that's been sorted out here for the two oh two sixty-five joint, we have the same members, Nicole, Sergio, Maya and as well city school liaison. Personnel, buildings and grounds, finance committee, we have Maria Forrest Updike as the chair, chair, Omar Salem and Nicole Pinkard. Park School Advisory Board, we have Pat Anderson, Andrew Weimer and Sergio Hernandez. For our Ed Red representative, Maria Forrest Updike. Illinois Association of School Board Delegate, Maya Wilkins, and then the Hertz Stock Policy Committee, Board Rep is Pat Anderson. Any, do, do you all want any changes, would you like to be added or would you like to swap out with somebody on any of these committees?
What does the Ed Rep representative do?
Ed Red.
Attend the meetings with myself and Tamara monthly and it's, Ed Red is a legislative group, so you learn all of the legislation about all of the things in this group. So, you would attend that meeting. The frequency of that meeting happens about what, once a month, Tamara?
Yep, perfect.
Any other thoughts, comments on these committee appointments, assignments? Okay. Now, we go back to the votes, so I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended 2025-2026 board meeting dates.
And I think, I think, I thought y'all were still discussing the committee of the whole, right?
Yeah, the committee.
Yeah, so are we going to do committee of the whole or are we going to go back to the whole?
Oh, the structure, committee of the whole. Okay, let's talk about that.
Good catch.
Thank you.
So, the, yeah, we had made the ask, a conversation has been floated around moving back to committee of the whole, having the committee meetings in the first hour and then coming back to the six o'clock. One question is that, is that really having the, that's really having the curriculum and the, which meeting, which meetings would happen? Is really the curriculum and the personnel?
Yes, yeah, so those two, right? We've, we, the way it's been structured before is that we've had separate meetings either on the same day or on a separate day, like on a Monday, we do the policy committee and then on a Wednesday, we would do the finance and buildings and grounds. Again, current structure is a committee of the whole, so what I'm hearing is there may be a desire to maybe go back to perhaps even having both committees meet, because that, I think that's happened before as well where you have, they, both committees meet at the same day, but at, maybe at a staggered time? Or in, or at the same time, but in, let's say we divide this room in committee and person, what is it, person, was it? Policy, policy meets over there in curriculum. And maybe, and finance meets in another room or on this side, right? Because we do have a room divider and that may be that we, we can continue doing it that way? What do folks think about that?
I like the idea of staggered meetings, just because I, I think there are going to be times when, you know, we want to listen in to both or we need some of the same people in both. But like if we have one start, then we just have to be careful about sticking to the time so that the second committee meeting can start around when it needs to start. But, I mean, that idea seems to work and then it, it keeps, you know, it means that people only have to be here one, one day on top of our regular board meetings.
So, point of.
Investigation on the, the ability to use the AI summary?
We did an investig-, several, we had several investigations and we actually have a conversation with the legal counsel scheduled with board leadership tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Because he gave us parameters around the translation piece, it was more around the Zoom aspect. Do you remember from what he said, Melissa?
No, I, I know that it was a topic of, of conversation, but just on using AI for like official meeting purposes versus just using them as, you know, like a meeting summary or a recap, but that was going to be discussed tomorrow.
I think it's because we're a public body, we're regulated by certain, we're, we're a public body, so we're regulated by certain parameters for use on, well, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I think the only point was that in order to make sure that we, to, to economize the time of the staff being present during those, those committee meetings, that we were able to use technology to assist other people who weren't able to attend to understand what was discussed in a way that was concise.
The challenge is the, it's not the transcription, it's the use of summary, which becomes the problem. So, you can just do transcription, summary, if you use the AI summary, it's given an interpretation and that might be the part that's problem.
Yeah, he, the legal counsel said that, but I think what was on the table essentially that board wanted to discuss was both meetings happening at the same time, on the same day in different locations.
Yeah, so if part of it is, it's like, so we're like, then the meeting of the whole, we're listening to all of it and, and I think what we were saying is like, we didn't feel like we were really leading it, whereas you want to dive into it, but you know, you got a whole lot of things to talk about. It would then require trust, right? And, you know, I'm like, hey, Pat, I'm over in the finance and I trust that the curriculum and policy that I can, you know, find out and we also have a way of communicating. If we do them separate, then the question is, then you're like every two, you know, like you're two, you wouldn't meet for two months, right?
No, you.
You meet every month.
It's still a monthly month, yeah.
So, would we then, would we decrease the, the overlap, right? So, if we say five, like five to five thirty, five thirty to six and.
Something like that.
The meetings would be shorter in that sense, they would have to be.
Nothing is ever shorter, yeah. This sounds good, but the reason we landed here is simply because when we had two separate meetings and we come back and ask you to vote on something at the required, at the regular board meeting, then essentially it was taxing for us because we had to repeat stuff that we've already said in the separate meetings, right? So, the level of, it, it was no translation back to, for example, if Omar came to the curriculum and policy meeting, but he's not on the finance buildings and grounds, but then he comes to the regular board meeting and we putting a vote on the table for something and he like, wait a minute, I don't even know what, what y'all talking? We like, well, we discussed this in curriculum and policy, he like, yeah, I know, but can you guys give us a, right? So, like, that was really kind of what landed us to shift to the one meeting, if that makes any sense.
What this does is it, it really makes it imperative that the people that are in each of the committee meetings are connecting individually with the members that aren't present so that they know what's going on. So, that's more of a, I think, commitment on our part, if we want to be, dive deeper on each of these topics, we have to commit to communicating with each other, which I can communicate, I can, I can commit to.
Yeah, I think stuff, I think things can get lost in translation. I think the good thing though is that you can, you know, like you can still watch the meetings. And so, I think like if we do this, we should, we should commit to get up to speed on our own so that we don't have to have the team make the same presentation twice, because that really is where the inefficiency comes in. It's like they have to present twice, if you're on the finance committee, you're listening to the same presentation twice. So, I think if we move back to that structure, we should like agree that we're going to find a way to learn what happened in that meeting by watching it or by summary, whatever we end up doing before the board meeting.
Ask a question then, do we have to do committees, like can we just have two regular meetings? Because it feels like then, it's still a little bit repetitive frankly, when we do a committee of the whole and then a meeting.
Yeah.
Like if we're meeting every two weeks, let's just meet every two weeks and scrap the committees, I guess, I don't know.
I think the, the point is that like there's expertise and there's a lot to know and being an expert in every aspect is more challenging.
Is this something, we have to have the committees, Madila?
No, I think that's why we merged to the committee of the whole structure. The committee of the whole structure just allowed us that flexibility. If there was a heavy load for finance, we could, you know, utilize that time and then also utilize the curriculum policy similarly. I mean, in our structure, we were switching them out, so it is sort of staggered, it's just in a, it's in a one meeting format.
One thing from the, and maybe it's just, it appears that in the committee of the whole, the board is less leading in the, in the committee piece of it, whereas I imagine if you're in the committee meetings, they're co-leading or co-with in partnership, it just appears as watching them, that I feel like it's more the, the, your cabinet is leading those and part of, is understanding what is our role in terms of leading these committees, you know? And it just seems like watching the board, the committee of the whole, I feel like y'all are doing a lot of the, cabinet is doing a lot of the.
That's always.
Right, but we're, but in this sense, it's like moving it to, we're responsible for, for doing our work and leading them. So, I mean, it's that, so it might just be the way that the committee of the whole has been doing, the board hasn't been, you know, so it might not be the committee of the whole structure, it might be the, the leadership of it, but it just, but it seems like, to me, it seems like just another meeting as opposed to where I've seen committee meetings before, I felt like the board is going to those before it was committed, it feels like the board was responsible for leading the meeting. So, I am curious, I don't know if the, what Tamara states, he, how do y'all, I mean, do you care if it's, you know, whether they're committee meetings, because y'all would have to be in them, I assume? Oh, can I ask that? I don't know if I can ask that.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I wouldn't.
And they're, they're here to answer.
Are you asking us if we, I'm, it's, it's late and I'm, got to get, are you asking?
Are you asking us if we, I'm, it's, it's late, and I'm gotta get, are you asking if we care if it's separate committees or together?
Yes, separate, and if we are helping to, you know, driving more of the committee, you know, if Maria's leading, you know, helping to drive more of the finance one if we separate it.
Do you need more time to answer?
Yeah, I think that's a difficult one to answer, because you're asking us to kind of shift structurally, the way we've gone about it, generally, these committees have been spaced, committees or meetings have been places to bring, like a report on work, like it's a place to bring to you the topics that you have said, hey, this is what we want on the board calendar, this is, you know, it's a good place for updates, it's a good place to bring projects or proposals, or things that you've said, hey, this is what the board wants to learn about, so what you're asking is really kind of bigger than the meeting itself, it's about rethinking the way the work happens, so I don't think that we can give an answer to that right now.
We've been doing the heavy lift of preparing for all, and now you carry the, the lift, the chair people.
Right, right, we do. So can we have, like, if we do split up the meetings?
I don't know what that looks like.
Can we have them on the same day, like an hour and a half apart, and then board members could either come and watch their, the committee that they're not on, or they can find a way to, you know, update themselves before the next board meeting, but that way, like it's on the same day, you've got the staff here that you need to answer the questions, but, you know, if, you know, if you're not on that committee, you don't have to be there and, you know, to ask questions, and to be there during that actual meeting.
Would that work? My only concern is with the hour and a half apart, just being considerate of the fact that, like, if we're starting the committee meeting at five o'clock, then the staff has to stay for the six thirty portion.
Right, well, I mean, they would have to stay for the part that's relevant to them, so, you know, if, if you don't need to be at the finance meeting, and it's time for the finance meeting, then you could leave for that.
But, but if it's, if, but, yeah, but if it's on the same day, and I'm on the curriculum meeting, but curriculum is not until after the finance meeting today, I can't go home, I'm still gotta stay here, so it is, there's no give and take for it.
Well, it's sort of like the committee of the whole, everybody's there anyway, the staff, from a staff perspective, it's like having the committee of the whole, or members who would have a different.
What if we tried, what if we just tried to do them at the same time, and then said, okay, we're gonna use, maybe it's an AI transcription, maybe it's the recordings, and we just went six months and said, do we feel like it's okay, and everybody can have conversations individually after the fact, and I'm a little bit just concerned about asking everybody to hang around here late.
You say same time, you mean, like simultaneously?
Yes, simultaneously.
So meaning JTC, the curriculum and policy, and then?
To me, that feels a little bit hard, especially if like, we need Melissa in one, and then, like, we have a question for her in one, and she's in the other. But if everyone else thinks it can work, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I've never done this before.
It does feel a little harder to coordinate, like I think it would take a lot more coordination in terms of who's where.
I guess for me, the committee structure makes the most sense if we're using them as, like, that's where we should be weeding out ideas. It doesn't feel like we use it that way, and that's why that meeting every other week might make more sense, we'd have less repetitiveness, like, you know, a lot of times Kirby says the same thing, which is, I already went over this at the committee of the whole, so then why are we doing it twice, let's just do it once, and then vote. Maybe we try that for a bit, I don't know. Like, we wouldn't have saved all these approvals for tonight, right? Like, look, I mean, we've been here for five hours, y'all, like, if we had a meeting every two weeks, maybe it would be faster.
So I think where I am, there's a meeting with the board leadership tomorrow to figure out what legally we are supposed to do or not, as it relates to, are we supposed to have committee meetings? Are we just supposed, can we, can we just have two regular board meetings, right, like, because, because I don't know, I think the other thing too, you know, I, I feel like, I feel like we're scrapping a system that we have, we're, we're scrapping the way we do committee of the whole meetings right now, when in full transparency, it really hasn't been articulated to me or my team, how the board wants these committee meetings to go, because then we can structure them to whatever it is that works for you. The, the way we run them is pretty much, again, how I inherited, with the difference of, instead of it being two separate meetings, I just did the infusion of one meeting, and we split, but if it's, you want the structure, you like, we want this agenda to be like this for this meeting, and this to be like this for this meeting, and we want it to be thirty minutes, trust and believe, our team can try to produce that, but we haven't, you know, because, you know what I mean, like, if we knew that, like, to Omar's point, if, if I knew that having Kirby to repeat that, and really it was because we were, we are constantly scrutinized about the transparency, and then it's, we got flooded with people saying, well, you never said that, or you got emails saying we never covered it, and we've covered it, which is why I kept having him to repeat it, which is one of the reasons why the board at that time said, for every agenda, put an SDRP update on there, put a SAP update on there, put a foster school, that's why you have those three standing ones, and it feels like that, because that was the ask of the board to get at that, but if that is not what this current board wants, my team and I, we're, we're more than willing to adjust it, we just don't know what, what you want. So, I think for us tomorrow, we'll, we have a call, board leadership scheduled with, with Brian to give us a little bit of clarity. I, I think, you know, I, I see the, I under, and what I really need to get to is because I think we established, if we run the meetings at the same time, we have to really be clear around, um, the recording aspect, because this is the only space we have the capacity to record, so if we run it, run them at the same time, which again, nothing requires us to have to publicly, if we post it, people come, you, we do some transcription or whatever you say, is that maybe, maybe board members come and give at the regular board meeting, you give an update from, from the chairperson perspective on what you covered, so it's publicly out there for people. If we're ready to reimagine the way we've been operating of all of this over excessive recording of everything, because it's just been the transparency that we've been trying to really push in the district, if we're open to do that, I think we can make it work with the both meetings starting at the same time, knowing that the district team would be split up into different places, if that is what, if, if that's what the board wants, but I, I feel like, yeah, it's a lot to process all of the things.
I'm just, I'm just not sure, this is not, this is not gonna help, what I'm about to say, I'm not sure how we move proposals through, I'm just, I'm used to a more formal committee approach, where there's a subcommittee who sends it up to the next committee, so I don't know how that works with committee on the whole, it seems like it's just two board meetings, so I would personally really like to see separate committees, that then send things up to the board, that's my one perspective.
I, I agree with that, I think the other, the other thing we could do is just alternate the recording, right, so there could be a transcription, if we're allowed to transcribe a meeting, using technology, and then the other committee can meet here and have it recorded, so at least every other one, each committee would have a recorded meeting, if we did it at the same time, if the goal is, because I do think transparency is important.
We'll see what he says.
Right.
So we have not decided this. Let's go home, let's go home.
But the vote is for the, oh, I see, the dates, okay, sorry.
Do we, is our next meeting set? Yeah, right, the June twenty, or is it not June third, or is it not?
June third is the committee of the whole.
Even if we don't vote, like, that's, to finish, like this next calendar is for the next fiscal year, correct?
Yeah.
So we can table this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion, or no? To table it, or no, do we not?
Do we need a motion? So we're, we're just gonna table it.
Okay, great.
Well, so you guys are gonna go check with the legal.
Yeah, we're gonna check with legal.
What's allowed, but we're not gonna wait until after July one.
No, no, no.
To decide this, okay.
I think that's what Omar was saying, do we have some more meetings in this cycle? We do June third.
June third.
Yeah.
The goal is to meet with legal counsel, our next meeting is June third, the goal is to bring this, put this back on the agenda for the board to discuss on June third, and take our, our vote.
Okay, so there wouldn't be an independent committee meeting prior to that?
Well, it's not, it's not on this year, no, that's next year.
We're talking about next, yeah, we're talking about next, yeah.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Try not to be this long.
All right, so, we voted on the approval of the twenty, the board meeting dates, we're gonna have to table, because, right, we, we just, okay, got it. All right, any other business, if any? A lot of business today.
I have a water gun for anyone who raises their hand.
Just please note that the June regular board meeting has been rescheduled to June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, with no further business, I adjourn this meeting at ten twenty-one PM, thank you, everybody, have a good rest of the week, take care.